All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:59 PM. It is Tuesday, August 15th. I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
Heiser.
Present.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Zuniga.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
All right. All members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing that, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up is executive session. I believe Councilmember Heiser has the honor. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene in the executive session from time to time. It is deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene in the executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. One, pending or contemplated litigation, settlement agreement, or to seek the advice of the city attorney attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct. Possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real estate property for public purpose, purchase of property for facilities and public purposes, personnel matters pursuant to Section 551.074, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Hot Pursuit, Project Chia Pet, Project Lion King. Take action, number two, take action on items discussed in executive session. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. No action was taken during executive session. No action will be taken now. Motion to adjourn? All right. We are adjourned. All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:04 PM. It is Tuesday, August 15th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
Heiser.
Here.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Zuniga.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
All right. All members present, we have a quorum. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor, would you go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes for the city council's special meeting on July 29th? Also for special meeting minutes for August 1st and the regular meeting for the same date, 2023?
A second.
All right. Motion by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes in the agenda. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. And we ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. So I have a few folks registered. First up, Anna Bowling.
Anna Martinais Bowling, and I am a resident of Kyle, an attorney here in Hayes County, and my office is in Kyle. And I'm also an artist. I went to law school with an art degree, and art is very near and dear to my heart. So when I heard the city of Kyle had created an arts and cultural commission, I was very excited. However, I soon started to hear rumblings, so I listened to some of the past city council meeting tapes. My understanding is that all the city council wants from the commission is some public art, like a statue somewhere or something like that. And Councilwoman Flores Cale noted that she didn't see any evidence of that. Having worked on several boards, I'm here to tell you that these things take time. I was impressed at how much the commission got done in such a short time. I counted eight or more projects, council-approved projects, seven to zero, and it's an amazing amount of work to get done between January and July. If council just wants recommendations on putting up statutes, there's no need for a commission. Get a task force together, or whatever you want to call it. If that's the only type of art council wants to approve, it will be a one-time thing and done. Even that project would take time, money, and a huge amount of effort by the task force, and in my opinion, would necessitate community involvement. Artists should represent ideas. The community should be invited to vote, and the winning sculpture or sculptures are then created and installed, which costs money. A task force can get into the details of what it takes to come up with a budget. An arts and cultural commission, on the other hand, works to bring the citizens together to show off their culture. How many different cultures are represented in Kyle? If you know, that's great. But if you don't, it takes time and work to gather that data. Once we get the data, then we can plan how best to represent all the citizens of Kyle. Art includes paintings, sculptures, music, dance, crafts, poetry, textiles, quilts, pottery, jewelry, and the list goes on. So an arts and cultural commission is what got me excited to work as a volunteer. I'm not leaving Kyle. I'm here to stay, and my idea of a great community is one brimming with art and culture. Full investment in it, no half-hearted attempts, inclusivity, diversity, and community. Please don't take the cultural out of the commission. Get community input from artists and community representatives because, from the looks of it, and I really mean no disrespect, so that members of this council need more education on what it means to be an arts and cultural commission. Thank you for your time. Sorry I talked so fast, but three minutes.
That's okay. Quite well done. Susan Reyna.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Susan Reyna. I'm a resident of Kyle, and I'm here tonight as a member of the nonprofit board Preservation Associates Incorporated. And I wanted to invite you all out to an event we're having at the library tomorrow night at 6:00 PM on the history of Kyle. It is memories of Kyle, reminiscences of two sisters, Tada Word Barton and Jane Word Kirkum. We're going to show them some pictures to spur their memories of growing up in Kyle and listen to them talk for about an hour. And so we invite everybody out to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next up is Lila Knight.
I'm going to have to stop sitting next to Mrs. Trump. My name is Lila Knight, and I'm very disappointed about this agenda item number 23 regarding a contract for real estate broker services. Number one, you're spending too much money on property. Secondly, this item lacks an incredible amount of transparency. I went through our RFPs, and just recently, you've done an RFP for surveying services rotation list, civil engineering services rotation list, geotechnical and construction materials testing services rotation list. Rotation list, that's a really good idea. This, just selecting one person because they've worked for you in the past, excuse me, for us, is not always a good reason to keep using them. It shows favoritism to one firm. It lacks transparency. And really, what y'all should be looking at is getting independent appraisals of all this property that you want to purchase. Also, there are a couple of little cleanup items. On that agreement, on page three, the address for the city manager is given as 105 North Brushy Street in Kyle. Actually, the Leander City Hall is located at 105 North Brushy Street. So you might want to change that address so that we actually get the notices. And then, secondly, there's no termination date of this agreement. So I guess it's just in perpetuity. And then, since I still have time, I also wanted to mention, since y'all have taken a great deal of time to discuss whether or not moderators and participants in the Dialogues for Peace and Progress should not be candidates for office. Okay. I think that you should also consider, in a year where the mayor is up for reelection, letting the city manager do the state of the city. I think that would be fair as well. So just something to consider, and I have great confidence in his ability to do that. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Michael Shanks.
Sorry. I know my Rs look like ems. Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Shanks. I represent a property owner here in Kyle, and I'm here to speak on behalf of agenda item number 22 regarding the pipeline setbacks. I'm here in support while I wish that we were removing the setbacks altogether for reasons of the easements were required for the Kinder Morgan pipeline in 2019, and you guys enacted this code in 2020 after landowners were compensated for a 50-foot easement, not a 200 by 200-foot setback, leaving every landowner with a Kinder Morgan pipeline easement setback on their property, having to fight for any sort of compensation because they are not allowed to do any sort of building or construction and have lost significant value in their property. I'm happy that we are at least reducing this to be better for these landowners, but I just wanted to share the perspective of this setback is burdening these landowners 100%. And you have many property and developments along this pipeline that had their entitlements in place, and you have allowed them to build in this setback with no restrictions. And so it seems very unfair that across the street, you have homes right against these easements, but any landowner that didn't rush to get their entitlements in place is now affected by the setback in your code. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Vanessa Westbrook.
I'm listening. Vanessa Westbrook, I am a resident of Kyle, a community volunteer, taxpayer, and a voter. That great American, Barbara Jordan, said, "It is a privilege to serve the people, a privilege that must be earned, and once earned, there is an obligation to do something good with it." With all of the negativity happening in communities near and far from us, our community has been eager to host dialogue events, organize opportunities to celebrate the different cultures of the people here in the city, and provide events to point out what similarities we share. I was going to bring to you, and I left it at home, the first paddle that I received at the Peace and Progress event in June of 2020. You see, that Peace and Progress was sort of a healing tool for our city, and it was because of the horrible death of George Floyd that all around the country, everyone was having issues with. It was a healing tool. Fifteen people who lived in the city of Kyle were brought together to serve on this panel, and it was to look at social justice here and far away, and what could we do in our community to either help or even eliminate, if we could? Much was learned from that event that was planned over several months, and it involved several citizens. Peace and Progress Dialogue was sponsored by former council member Dex Ellison. With that first event and others to follow, well, except one, the most important component was the voice of the people and the topics or the issues. The moderator was the guide on the side, and the citizens on their desks were the stars on the stage. The Peace and Progress scenario included a diverse group, hard topics, and a skilled moderator. Well, except for one. The Peace and Progress community dialogue was not about the enjoyment of the novice moderators who took away from engaging the citizens on the panel and getting them to talk about their thoughts on questions, but it was to focus on this idea of issues that people tend to shy away from. The local newspaper summarized the event the next day as being thought-boboking, interesting, well worth the time. Well, most of them were put in the newspaper. You know, come to think of it, much has been said about what we've done in this community lately and how positive we've been artistically, culturally, looking at working together. So I think we want to continue focusing on that. How can we, as a community, work together to do all of the things that we need to make sure everyone is included? I leave you with this quote from that great American, Eleanor Roosevelt. "Think as little as possible of yourself, but think as much as possible of others." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stephanie Murray.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Murray. I'm a fourth-generation Kyle resident, voter, student, and community volunteer. Based on the direction given from city staff at the July Arts and Cultural Commission meeting, the art board would only give recommendations for public art and public art only, particularly visual arts with restrictions on events. It was clarified that all cultural aspects would be removed, and events were no longer a concern of the art board at the direction of city council. Not once was it officially clarified in a public document what would happen with some of these cultural events until four days ago in the city manager report. In the event that you do remove culture from the Arts and Cultural Commission, there's a few questions that need to be answered. Will it be the library and culture board? Will it be the parks recreation and culture board? If the library is in charge of cultural events, will these events only take place in the library, or will they be public displays in various city-owned buildings that generate lots of foot traffic, which all citizens are able to participate in, as was the mission of the Arts and Cultural Commission? Since the Arts and Cultural Commission combined art with these cultural holidays, will there be cultural and artistic displays in City Hall, Mary Kyle Hartson Square Park, and the Croak Center? Would the continuation of a Cinco de Mayo cultural art display and Juneteenth cultural dance display and pop-up museum in 2024 not be considered public art since it also has a cultural element that isn't covered by an art board? If the park and library also cover cultural events, why would the city consider cutting out the additional seven culturally artistic events, which focused on teens and adults that were put on by the Arts and Cultural Commission in the span of half a fiscal year? Again, based on the direction given at the July Arts and Cultural Commission meeting, for those who are otherwise impaired from appreciating visual arts, how will the art board incorporate performative arts, auditory arts, culinary arts, and tactile arts in order to maintain inclusivity? I'd like to echo a sentiment from a citizen comment at the last city council meeting. If you decide to separate art and culture and place restrictions on the type of art that can be enjoyed while placing the responsibility of cultural events on the parks or library, then that simply isn't good enough. If you don't participate in the various cultural events put on throughout the year, then don't try to circumscribe it for those who do. Council members, the citizens of Kyle are free to go to cultural and artistic events in San Marcos, Buta, or even Austin and spend our money there, however we choose to stay in Kyle. Now, I'm well aware that there are a couple of you who don't hold these same sentiments, and to that end, I say thank you. Thank you for recognizing the smaller aspects of the city that matter to us, and thank you for recognizing that those cultural events and/or art displays increase the quality of life. And to the rest of you, think of why the citizens are upset instead of formulating your arguments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That is all the citizen comments that I have in terms of forms. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Diane Hervon. I live at 1528 Amberwood Loop. I'd like to speak in regards to two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is in regards to item 21. The Dialogue for Peace and Progress has been in existence for a few years now without any issues. I feel like this item on this evening's agenda is sending mixed messages. This event's intent was to have dialogue amongst minorities with minorities, but this item prohibits a minority who is running for office from participating. Does not make sense. Unless you are uniformly taking away all participation in any city events for any candidate, including the mayor, then I respectfully request you vote no. If a candidate is running for office, just have them sign a waiver that they're not going to promote their campaign during the Dialogue for Peace. Let them be a moderator. Second item I would like to speak to is item number 23. I have a question as to why RFQ or even an RFP was not requested. We have done others in the past for professional services. As many of you know, the real estate industry right now is suffering, and many agents are starving. So I'm at a loss as to why neither document was even considered. By reading the agendas and listening to the budget meetings, it appears the city will be making several land purchases in the future. So why are we not spreading the wealth to others in this field? Also, will our legal counsel still be needed in these transactions, or will there be instances where the legal counsel will not be needed? Because it might create conflict there. Anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments period is now closed. Next up is agenda order. Does anybody have any items that they wish to move around? Okay. I do have one. I'd like to, because we have some of the firefighters here, and I know they're probably on overtime, I would love the opportunity to have an item that I would like us to discuss off the top after we do the proclamation, just so that they can be on their way. All right. Next up is appointments. Agenda item number five, appoint Leann Andrews to vacant seat six of the Community Gardens Committee. Ms. Espinoza.
Mayor and council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. As you're all aware, you recently approved the formation of the Community Gardens Committee, and they have already held their first meeting. They've already held their first meeting. However, right before the first meeting, we did have one member who had to withdraw, and so we went back to the initial pool of the 25 applicants and then the 14 that we interviewed, and we would like to fill seat six with Leann Andrews. Leann Andrews has lived in the city of Kyle for three years. She represents the Spring Branch neighborhood. She has previous experience as a community garden volunteer while living in Seattle and is a current member of the Kyle Community Garden Club. Leann is here in attendance if you do have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Does anybody have any questions? Motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale, that we approve agenda item number five. Is there any discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up, agenda item number six, appoint Candace Fuch to vacant seat four of the Arts and Cultural Commission. Ms. Schmice.
Good evening, mayor and council. Amber Schmice, Assistant City Manager. For the record, tonight, we are asking for your consideration of appointment of Candace Fuch to seat number four for the currently named Arts and Cultural Commission. She is a fiber artist who lives in Kyle. She's worked in government, and she has experience with working collaboratively with others to stay within budgets, so she's well knowledgeable of that. She has demonstrated a strong commitment to be involved with the Arts and Cultural Commission, and then everybody on the interview panel who were able to talk with her felt that she would be a strong candidate for this position. If you have any questions, she is here in the audience, and her term would be from tonight until September 30th of 2024.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schmice. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Councilmember Flores Cale.
So seat four, what are those requirements?
It's an artist, representative. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item six, please.
Motion by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve agenda item number six. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up is agenda item number seven, a proclamation honoring former mayor Sandra Tenorio at the request of the family. They've asked us to give them a little more time until the next meeting so that they can have family present. We want to be honoring, respectful of that. So we'll bring that back next meeting. And then, agenda item number eight, a proclamation recognizing the service of first responders related to the recent wildfires in Kyle and the surrounding areas. Chief Taylor and firefighters, if y'all wouldn't mind coming forward a little bit?
We got more coming in.
Oh, no.
They had to leave quickly on a call, but they're back.
You know, a lot of y'all know we had some serious fires over the last, you know, week's worth of time. The Kyle Fire Department's been fighting fires, not only in our land, but in the surrounding jurisdictions as well, everybody banding together. And so the least that I could do is offer a proclamation memorializing the work that you've put forth in the recent months, and it's really all of us at the city council, I think, are just very, very grateful for what y'all have done. So I'm going to read this out. All right. Whereas on August 8th, 2023, just before 2:00 PM, a fast-moving wildfire erupted in the Oak Hill neighborhood of Kyle and quickly consumed approximately 15 acres, forcing evacuations and bringing emergency crews, including aerial support, to our community to fight the blaze. And whereas, regional and local first responders, including the Kyle Fire Department, South Hayes Fire Department, San Marcos Fire Department, North Hayes Fire Office and Emergency Services, Taylor EMS, Grand Prairie Fire Department, Texas Department of Emergency Management, Hayes County, Kyle Police Department, Hayes County Wildland Task Force jumped into action to stop the flames, saving lives, and approximately 50 homes. And whereas, local organizations, including the Kyle Parks and Recreation Department, Kyle Public Library, St. Anthony's Catholic Church, Kyle First Baptist Church, and HEB, opened their doors to provide shelter, support, and resources to the temporarily displaced, to those temporarily displaced by the fires. And whereas, Kyle Public Works Department staff showed bravery and resourcefulness by getting city water trucks to places along the fire's perimeter to stop the progress of the flames. And whereas, the city of Kyle activated the Emergency Operations Center at the new Kyle Public Safety Center for the first time, allowing for more efficient response and updates to the community throughout this emergency event. And whereas, no structures were damaged and no people were harmed due to the massive regional and community response, only days after many of the same agencies, including South Hayes Fire, San Marcos Fire, North Hayes County Fire, Kyle Fire, Buta Fire, Wimberley Fire, Austin Fire, Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, Travis County Fire Rescue, Hayes County Community Emergency Response Team, Hayes County Sheriff's Office, Hayes County EMS, and Wimberley Fire Department responded to the Oak Grove Fire in the San Marcos area that consumed approximately 400 acres, including one structure, with no lives lost. There now fore, be it proclaimed that the city council does hereby recognize and commend the first responders and regional organizations for their extraordinary work under extreme conditions during the Oak Hill and Oak Grove fires. Thank you for everything that you have done for us over this last week.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah. It's been a teamwork. Like I said, the public works, the water trucks were instrumental in slowing that fire down. These guys do all the work. So, yeah. It's a great group of guys we have, and we just keep getting bigger.
Anybody have any comments for the chief? Councilmember Parsley.
I just wanted to say that I don't think there are enough words for us to thank you for what you guys have done over the last couple of weeks. We have had fire after fire after fire. And, you know, knowing that even, we are in such a situation that the smallest thing can cause a fire, even like a spark or somebody mowing the lawn. I learned a lot about it this past week, and the quick and efficient response that you guys And the quick and efficient response that you guys had is something that we really applaud. So I just wanted to know that your job doesn't go unnoticed. We really appreciate all that you do for the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes, I'd also like to say that thank you to all the firefighters, first responders, and everyone who's out there, emergency management. The drought is dangerous. I mean, we're on this heat wave. We don't know when we're going to come out of it. But just thank you so much for saving people's houses, their property, their wildlife, and just for giving your time and energy just to be out there in the front to put these fires out. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Floris Kael.
Again, like everybody else, I want to say thank you. And my hope is moving forward that the Fire Department and the city can build a bigger, stronger relationship. I know in the last budget, Mayor Mitchell made a motion to include some supplies on the city's behalf that would be held by our emergency response, but hopefully that also enables us to be of assistance to you guys quicker, sooner, better. And so, for me, that's the best way that we can show our appreciation. So, and thank you, guys.
And that's much appreciated. That's huge, helping us with hazmat situations like that. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, would y'all mind coming forward for a photograph with us?
Yeah, like a soccer player? Yes. We'll come back here. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Taylor.
All right, the next item I'm going to take up is related to the Fire Department. It's agenda item 26, a resolution approving the, an amendment to the lease agreement by and between the city of Kyle and Kyle Fire Department, Emergency Services District Number Five. So the background on this is way back in the day, the city of Kyle, in partnership with EST Five and the school district, helped to construct the precinct two, or not precinct two, but fire station number two, station number two site. And at that time, the way it was figured out is that the city of Kyle would pay for the construction, the school district would donate the land, and the Fire Department would own and operate and maintain the facilities. And that's how we got all that structured. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, so the, in the, in the lease agreement, there is a upstairs sort of training room, you know, a sort of utility room, essentially, that-
It's downstairs in the front of the building.
Downstairs in the front of the building. There's a, there's a room where, in our lease agreement with them, it says that we would maintain it for the ability to do, the city of Kyle has control of that room, essentially, you know? And so I think we have a yoga class and a scouts meeting that takes place there. The Fire Department is now fully staffed, or on their way to being fully staffed, and they got real problem being able to make the firefighters comfortable. And it would go a long way if we could let go of that room and let them do what they need to with it in order to utilize it for its primary function. Does that sound right?
Yeah, so there's 10 to 12 people there most days now, and there's only seating for six in the living dayroom area. So EMS wants to build a couple additional bedrooms, because there's two ambulances that run out of that station as well, and add another seating area just for their people. So, and that's basically what that activity room would be used for.
So to me, that seemed like, because of our new public safety center, our continued growth as a city, not, not the highest priority of room for us to try to keep control of, I wanted to propose that we strike that out of that lease agreement and let them occupy that space in its entirety. Councilmember Floris Kael.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So I know that there were two different lease agreements, one that was provided to the city, to council in the backup that was not signed, but there's also a previous one from 2004. And it has, I just want to make sure we're sticking to the same agreement, because it looks like maybe the city is responsible for a few additional things. And correct me if I'm wrong, Paige, it looks like insurance and maintenance. 3B says insurance, or the maintenance. And then page four, section four liability insurance, says the city is supposed to cover that as well. And that expires August 4th, oh, what was that date? Like 2103. So I think we have another 80 years on that. So if we're going to go ahead and start, you know, looking at the lease and abiding by that, or making any amendments, and if we wanted to do that, we couldn't make that amendment until 2103, I think is when it was. So I just want to make sure that in addition to letting go of the room, are we also letting go of that maintenance as well? And are we also going to start picking up the insurance?
Mayor and Council, Paige Stein, City Attorney for the Record. There's, there's two documents as background that I'm, that I'm aware of. These are older transactions. The, the lease agreement that I believe you're referring to, the one from 2004, that's an agreement between, an interlocal agreement between the Hayes Consolidated Independent School District and the city of Kyle. And so that relates to the property, the city-
So does the city pay the insurance on that, I guess is my question. Also, the other, the other agreement I had in question, I didn't understand, because it wasn't like executed at all.
So, so first, with respect to the agreement between the city and the school related to use of the land, the city's got certain obligations to maintain insurance under that agreement. And so that is an agreement as between the city and the school. So the city needs to fulfill those terms of the agreement. Any renegotiation of that agreement would be between the city and the school.
Okay, so yeah, my concern is like the Fire Department only owns, you guys don't own anything, right?
We don't own anything.
Yeah, the land is a school, the building is a city.
Yes.
So that, and maybe that's why, that there's not an agreement at all with the Fire Department, because I don't know what they own.
There's a lease agreement with us.
Yeah, we, we, the one that was provided to us wasn't executed, so I didn't know to the extent that it was, it superseded another agreement.
So again, the, the agreement between the city and the, and the school addresses use of the land. The city was to build a facility for fire operation and EMS services within five years of the agreement being entered and to operate those types of services-
But it also discusses the room. That room, that was for city use.
That's a second, that's a second agreement. So we've got, but what's before you tonight is the, an amendment to the lease agreement between the city and the volunteer fire department. That agreement was approved in 2006 by resolution. There's a signed resolution, but there's not a signed agreement. We could not locate a signed agreement. So what the amendment does this evening, and the other thing that has happened since that agreement was entered, was that the volunteer fire department has dissolved and then the EST number five has kind of assumed the, the operations of the volunteer fire department. So the, the lease amendment in front of you tonight, what that does is it makes the changes to get rid of the use of that room for meeting and community purposes, turns it wholly over to the, the Fire Department. It allows remodeling to occur with approval of the city manager or designee, and all permits and inspections have to be obtained and complied with. It recognizes that the volunteer fire department at some point in the past was dissolved, and EST number five is taking over the operation of the volunteer fire department. It off the city, by approving the lease agreement amendment, would agree to the assignment of that lease, underlying lease agreement, to EST number five. And it also, the agreement also provides for the EST number five, once they take it to their board for approval, to agree to this amendment and the terms of the lease.
Okay.
And incorporates that terms of, the terms of the lease as a, as a, as a part of that amendment. So that way, we get all, everything confirmed and agreed to, one document controlling this relationship.
So my question is, it's discussed in both the 2004, fully executed with the, with interlocal agreement, as well as the 26, 2006, it's not executed. So the 2004 says the city shall be allowed to construct structures and improvements deemed necessary or desirable for its intended use, including buildings, garages, parking lots, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to read it all, but my question is, do we also have to go back and amend that as well? Since it's discussed in both.
The building's already completed, and so what they're proposing to do is just remodel interior to the building. The city is obligated to maintain the building, keep it up, and the city, in its lease agreement with the Fire Department, has kind of authorized the Fire Department to update and maintain those facilities. So I, I don't think that there needs to be an amendment to that. I think it's all within what was contemplated between the school and the city, this particular use.
Okay, my concern again was that it was not executed. Even though there was a resolution, there was not an executed agreement. So either way, with that said, I'd like to approve agenda item number 26, please.
Second.
All right, motion-
Is there any second?
Motion by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga, that we approve agenda item 26. You understand that page to be direction to make the changes to the contract that allow for the elimination of our claim in any and all forms on that room. Right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so does it need to come back to us with those changes in there? Or are we good on?
No, that's taken care of in the amendment.
In the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, next up is agenda item number nine, receive a report, hold the discussion, and provide staff direction regarding project Hot Pursuit. Ms. Vargas.
Mayor and Council, Victoria Vargas, Director of Economic Development. I am here to present to you a project known as Hot Pursuit, which is a project we've been working on for several months now, maybe over a year now. It's the 100-acre parcel that is known as the Caraway tract, and we have our developers here to give us a presentation. It's a large retail center with dining options and retail space. It'll have a mixed-use component with a central lawn, and it'll also incorporate multifamily. Here to give you a, well, the developer is requesting a tour's participation from the city and the county, and also we need to consider the PUD, the DA, and the annexation for this project. And here we have Andrew Alvis from New Quest, who will give us the presentation, and then you can ask questions after. You just press that little, here's my first sign, right down there.
Awesome, well, thank you so much. Really appreciate it, Mayor and Council. Really thankful that we were able to get on the agenda. Really want to thank staff as well. Y'all have been wonderful helping us get to this point. But this has been a project that we've loved for so long. We've been working on it, like you said, maybe, probably almost two years now since we first located the site. And we're extremely excited about it. We have a really cool mixed-use development here, really a lifestyle component and center to it. And so really just kind of want to run through that with you guys. So this is our project, as now we're calling it Vibe Park. This name is still up for discussion. It's, it's, you know, really trying to play a patrician to the vibe trail, but again, this is something we're kind of still working through. But I want to give you some background on, on who we are and really kind of how this project came to life. This is a JV between Transwestern and New Quest. New Quest is really doing all the horizontal improvements, the infrastructure, the retail component, and Transwestern will be doing the multifamily piece along with the VMU portion. But, you know, New Quest has a really long history here in Texas. We've built over about $4 billion in, in projects. We've, last year, did about six new developments, equivalent to about this size, all really large town center type developments. Today, our portfolio is about $2.3 billion. And, you know, we're really a full-service firm. We represent over 100 national credit tenants. We have a leasing team, a development team, architecture's in-house, we have a legal team in-house. So we're really a full-turn commercial company, development company. I'm going to briefly go, I'm going to try to go through these pretty quickly, but a couple of our projects. Rosenberg Town Center is about 2 million square feet. It's one that, it's the top 30 largest in the whole country. It's been incredibly successful for Rosenberg, and it's, you know, here's kind of the site plan that you can see the extents, the extensiveness of, of the tenants we work with, the size, what we've developed. Stone Hill Town Center in Flugerville, might be a little bit more, you know, a little bit more, but it's one of the second-most shopping center in Austin and the MSA, but 15 most in Texas. And then really Creekside Town Center, which is just here in New Braunfels, you know, it's really one of our gold gems. We get 6.2 million visits annually at this center. It's, it's, it's grown. We started this center in '08, '09, and it continues to grow. We're adding new components to it all the time. We're currently redeveloping it. You know, we're long-term holders, so we're always looking to make sure that we have the best tenants and high-quality materials and everything else, to make sure that these centers withstand the test of time. And that kind of goes into the COVID and online shopping resistant. You know, it's very important in today's environment to make these centers very lifestyle component. You know, you really want the office, the retail, you know, the medical, you know, you want to make sure people are staying there, shopping there, going to eat there, doing their entertainment there, you know, taking their kids to daycare there, or whatever it may be, but you want people to go there and stay there all day. And really, a center of this size is, is something that we need people, not only in Kyle, you know, 65,000 residents are not going to support this center, we're going to need people outside of Kyle to come to this center, shop here, stay here, spend their money here, and to really make this successful, not only for the center, but for the tenants itself. And the last thing we want is a tenant to, to go out because they, you know, they can't get the sales that they need to support their, their business. So this is the Caraway tract. It's on the east side of 35, just north of Kyle Parkway, south of Kyle Crossing. I hope most are familiar with it, but just along BB Road. It's kind of an overview of the shopping center. We have a large box component. We have lots of restaurant paths along the front edge, and then we have this really cool mixed-use feel, kind of along the BB roadside or the south end of the project. The presentation's long, so I'm going to try to go through things pretty quickly and happy to go back if anybody has questions. But this kind of shows the circulation, the vibe trail, and the walkability of the shopping center. The, the vision behind this is really kind of, we wanted to play kind of some tribute to the Great Northern Railroad that really kind of started this, this city. So, you know, we're using a lot of brick, steel. It's almost, the feel is almost kind of like an modern industrial, but kind of a farmhouse feel, so we wanted it to be very homey, but also, you know, have, have the nice glass pieces, a lot of steel components, lots of green, green space, outdoor areas, and kind of that, that farm feel as well. There's a lot more in there, but just kind of moving through quickly. This is kind of a one-shot rendering coming from the, the south, the east side of the vibe, or of the, the, the site. Again, we're, we kind of have a lot of restaurant paths that will be along the front edge. You can kind of see the vibe trail going right in front of the green space. We'll get into a little bit further as we go, but, you know, again, the whole idea here is, is creating a lifestyle component where we get people coming from outside of the city to come here, shop, stay, work, play, and do all of their activities. I'm just going to go through a couple of different angles that we have here. Again, this is kind of from the south, east side. This is kind of looking at the project straight ahead, and, and some of these colors and, and, you know, they're going to change a little bit, but this is, should give you a feel for kind of the style and the idea, the look of how this project will be. This green space here is really, it's challenging in some of these markets to, to build a cohesive retail component with green space that, that really helps your tenants succeed- that really helps your tenants succeed, that helps everybody do well in the shopping center, the cohesiveness, the way tenants can interact from side to side, the way people sit on patios, let their kids go play on the green space. And so this really, you know, has a pretty good angle. The pavilion is kind of more where we can do markets and small little events. And then we'll have all the retail along both sides. The green spaces are broken up with quite a few different, you know, seating areas, playgrounds, little green spaces, landscape architecture, those sorts of things. But very, very modern sorts of green spaces. And again, just another angle showing all the restaurant frontage pads that we're working with and talking to. This is kind of our shop row. The little, I guess, orange line is the vibe trail that will go right kind of on the front side. We will have, you know, the golf cart parking. It's a 12, you know, all the standards for that vibe trail. But what we're really trying to do here, you can kind of see in the middle, you know, we have parallel parking, so we really want it to be more of a, you know, bringing kind of that urban development feel to this project. It slows traffic down. People are able to walk around. It makes it much more walkable. And it just gives you that cohesiveness that you really need for these lifestyle centers. These are just some architectural designs, you know, again, the steel, the glass, kind of the modernness, but also kind of that old industrial feel that brings back to the Great Northern Railroad. These are the kind of the small shops along that road we just talked about. You can see the golf carts and the paths. And again, as we, as the tenants come and we sign leases here, you know, this could slightly change. But overall, this is kind of the aesthetics and the feel of the project. Just more of that. And it kind of digs, dives into the green space. You can kind of see how we have these angled walkable paths from the restaurants to the shops. Again, it's, it can be difficult sometimes having the restaurants when you're going to sit down and eat. Are they going to go spend money over here? Is it, you know, you got to make sure the distances are right. You got to make sure the seating areas fit. You got to make sure you're not, you know, doing over-the-top playgrounds that block the views of certain areas. So there's really a lot of things to think about to make sure that your tenants are healthy, that they're going to continue to stay there. You know, the last thing you want is tenants going out and having dark space in any of your centers. So more kind of inspiration and feels. And this is kind of going into the green space area. Really just, you know, the same thing, the cohesiveness, the community aspect, the lifestyle. You know, what's really important in today, and you can kind of see here in the back right side, we have a two-story retail on the bottom, an office and/or medical on top. Is, you know, we need bodies to be on the ground in this project at all times to support the retail. That means office. That means medical. That means multifamily. The more bodies that we can have here, the more successful the tenants do. Frankly, the better the sales are that generate the tax revenue. This is the vertical mixed-use piece. It will be three stories of multifamily above retail. And then we have the multifamily, which is just in the backside. It's more of an urban, what I always, you know, like to call it the donut feel. But, you know, it's a high-end multifamily development. The look of it is, again, very cohesive with our project, very high-end on that portion as well. But again, very walkable. We need them to also really, you know, help generate the sales and be there for our tenants. But this goes into just really like the green space components, shade, kids' shades area, shades, shade, shaded areas, fire pits, just different seedings, just different lawn components for events. And, you know, our hope is that we have, you know, every Friday night, you know, move you on the lawn with your kids, or Saturdays you have some sort of a band or something coming out to play. But farmer markets on the weekends, but very, very interactive. And again, it keeps the center healthy, and it's really what we need to make this center successful. More of kind of the same thing, a covered stage, you know, pedestrian walkways, kids' play areas, seating areas. And then it kind of goes in, you know, just different materials, different, you know, structures that we're looking at putting there. One thing that I believe is extremely important here is the amount of leakage that we're, the city of Kyle is currently getting. This data right here is based off of, it's a company called Placer AI, and they base it off of cellphone tracking data. So as your cellphone pings at different towers, it can follow you wherever you go. And it's pretty unbelievable to see where the residents of Kyle are shopping. So this right here shows the number, the top 10 areas that residents are shopping, or shopping centers they're going to. Number one being South Park Meadows, which is outside of your city. South Park Meadows receives 190,176 visits a year. So if you equate that to call it a $13, $14, $15 ticket item, I mean, that's a significant amount of sales tax you're losing. And it kind of goes down the list. But as you can see, all the top 10 are outside of your city. 61% of retail visits are leaked outside of Hays County, and 7.5 million retail visits by Kyle residents have been outside of Kyle. So, you know, 7.5 million visits to shopping centers outside of Kyle, spending money outside of Kyle, it's a huge number. Keeping those residents here or and/or bringing residents outside to come shop here, I believe would be huge for Kyle and could make drastic changes. I wanted to take that data and almost flip it around. And so I took the South Park Meadows and kind of put a heat map on it to show, you know, where these people are shopping from. And so you can kind of see, you know, Kyle is a huge concentration where they're coming from to go shop at that South Park Meadows site. Did kind of the same thing, Barton Creek Square. It's much farther north in Austin, but you can also see, I mean, Kyle, you're getting a large concentration of Kyle residents going all the way that far north to go shopping. And then kind of going back to this Creekside Town Center, it's been an extremely successful project for us. Currently redeveloping what you see here in the center into more modern green spaces that, you know, people like today. We built this in '08, I believe, and this is, this is kind of what was modern back then. But, you know, what's interesting here is, again, you're seeing as far south as New Braunfels, I mean, you're still seeing a large concentration of Kyle coming that far to shop. And a lot of the tenants that we are working with that are going to be in this shopping center or will be, are also in New Braunfels. So you're definitely going to pick all of that traffic up from New Braunfels. This shopping center is the 93rd largest shopping center in the nation, the eighth in Texas, based on foot traffic, excuse me, not on square footage, and the first within the 15 miles. So 6.2 million visits a year. Your average visit is six times a year. So people are shopping there consistently, which is great. You want to see that because you want them to continue to come back. And they stay there an average of just over an hour, which is phenomenal. I mean, you want, you want people to spend as much time as you can, again, in your city, spending money in your city. As far as the project and the value, the tax value it'll bring to the city, currently today, you know, you're receiving almost nothing. The property has been an ag. And our project is just over $200 million is what our estimated value of it will be. And then, you know, estimating the sales tax, you know, in Hays County property ISD, I mean, you're looking at about $6.5 million coming into the city. Well, I guess 2.7 of that going to the Hays County School District, which is a huge number for the schools. But, you know, close to 3 million on your sales tax and just over a million on property tax. As far as jobs go, I mean, we've, this is a hard calculation, but we've calculated based off of your typical restaurant or retail user and what their typical labor percentage is. 808 full-time equivalent jobs is what we believe will come off of this site. This really doesn't include your salaried employees or your more corporate employees and/or, you know, the medical and those uses, but more retail and restaurant. And then, you know, this was kind of a one last statistic was, as far as Hays County goes, we want people to come, work here, shop here, you know, live here, play here, enjoy their time here in Kyle. You know, today, there's 35,000 people coming into Hays County. This is an employment status, coming into work. 15,000 are staying, but you're losing 60,000 people to work outside of Hays County, which, again, you know, outside of Kyle. And so I think overall, you know, the goal here is to create a lifestyle component, something. I mean, it's, we're super passionate about it. It's something that, you know, we want the residents, we think the residents are going to love. We have tenants we know the residents are going to love. We want people to come, work, play, shop, live, and really kind of enjoy this as an all-day activity to come to this center and spend money in this city. So open for questions, and that's really it on my side.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, so.
All right, let's go.
Please bear with me. So first one, have you provided us with a water distribution model already?
I believe we have. Anthony, have.
Water distribution model. So the water provider. My name's Anthony Anis with Kimbley Horn. I'm a civil engineer representing the developer. So the water network, it's Texas Water Utilities is the water provider out here. So we're currently working with them to go through the initial entitlements. We, the next step is we're requesting a Fireflow model. We have not gotten that yet, and from there, we'll actually design the water network.
I was told you guys will be attaching to Monarch. That's the water you will be using?
Monarch is now Texas Water Utilities.
Oh, okay. So at some point, are you going to plan to be using like our water? The city water, city of Kyle water?
No, it would all be Texas Water Utilities water.
From like the moment you break ground until the end of the TERS? Well, that, that's going to be, okay. Would you have to do any infrastructure changes, like increasing off the lines or anything that we currently have or that they have?
For Texas Water Utilities? No, we already have a study done with them. And we were told that we just need to connect to the, I'm going to mix it up, but there's a 12-inch and an 8-inch close to our site. One of them's at Amberwood South, and then the other one, I believe it's for Public Drive, which is about 500 feet away from our property. So we would be connecting to those two lines, forming circulation, which will then just increase the water pressure in the surrounding communities.
Okay. The next one I have is like, would you guys be okay to have artificial turf in all, the entire complex?
Well, as far as the green space goes, that's what it will be.
Okay, fantastic. All right, next. You guys are asking for a huge incentive. So there are some things that people from Kyle have spoken that they need. In a grocery store is one of them. So it's this past week I went, I always go to Trader Joe's in Austin because there is no other Trader Joe's around here. I take that trip 45 minutes just to go and get my things. So this hub is a perfect retail hub for a Trader Joe's or for a natural, natural grocers and all these Kroger. Are you planning to bring a grocer? Because I feel like my vote depends on that.
We, we, we def, we would love a grocer. We want a grocer. There would be nothing better for this project than a grocer. We have talked with Trader Joe's. This market is not somewhere they're looking at today. But there's definitely, we would, if we could get a grocer, we want one. It's not out of the site to try to find one.
Okay.
You know, we can't make them go somewhere they don't want to go.
I don't want to give an incentive if there is not going to be a grocery store there. So I don't know if that's something that can be put in that development agreement.
Well, we, I mean, we can't base our development off of, you know, making sure that a grocer comes. You know, it's, you know, these tenants, retail tenants, they have a certain amount of bullets they're willing to spend in, around the country. While we're going to try to fight as best we can to get them here, we can't, you know, put our whole project on the line just because the grocer decides, hey, this isn't the market we're going to be in today.
Okay. Is there any way, and I don't know if our financial advisors are here, that we can reduce the term of the TERS if the grocery store doesn't come to this development?
I mean, I'll leave that to the financial advisors, but I mean, you know, we.
It's beautiful. I want it. I think.
We want a grocery store. There's nothing better for us.
I know, but I don't want to approve this and then, I'm sorry, I don't want to use a bad term, but we're screwed and we don't have a grocery store there. So I don't know if that's something we can set. The next thing is like, I love all the restaurants and I love the architecture, but I would like to see entertainment. I did see that you have entertainment in there. And I want to know what kind of entertainment that does not include food.
I mean, there's going to be, well, there will be fitness. There will be entertainment. Today, I don't know the entertainment user that's going to be there. But without it, I mean, we have to have entertainment to make this successful.
I would like to see, and this is a suggestion, there's some things that I have seen. Children Discovery Play Center, something like my museum, small version of the Dusium, Play Street Museum in Sunset Valley, something like that. I know parents and moms are asking for things like that. We just approved a splash pad that I don't know if the kids will be able to use. So I want to make sure that, I mean, again, I'm going to the incentive. If we're going to do that, then we need something that people from Kyle want. And something indoors that where moms' schools can go and tour. Those are my biggest asks, entertainment for children in a grocery store.
Perfect. Well, I can understand everything you're saying. I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, and every weekend, all we do is try to go find somewhere a green space or activities, entertainment, and so.
It's too hot to be inside.
It's exactly what we want. And, you know, what I can say is, is this site has really kind of been marketed kind of under the table, if you will. I mean, we want to make sure that we can make a deal with the city and want to make sure that this is something that we can actually build and develop. And for us to go out on a limb and go out and pretend like we have a project before this project is really done, we just, we haven't put full marketing efforts out there for it yet. And so as soon as we, you know, really get the approval, I mean, we have tenants that want to be here. But again, the tenants, as they know that this project memorializes and becomes fruition, that we're going to start getting a lot more traction.
I just want to make sure that there is a contingency for a grocery store. And maybe the financials will be different if the grocery store doesn't come. It's a huge incentive, and I have to respond to people. I'm like, why are you doing this and there's no grocery store? You know, now if you're telling me, we will bring you one.
If we knew we could bring you one, we would. I mean, again, there's nothing that helps our project more than a grocery store, but it's not something that we can hang this whole development on that, hey, we're, you know, if we don't get a grocery store, then nothing, nothing will work and all of our due diligence, time, and effort is out the window. But again, you know, if we're talking to all of them and we're trying to bring them here, and we hope we can get one.
But hope is not enough for me.
Well, we do have a discussion on the financials a little bit later in the presentation. John Akaneos is here. He's our financial consultant. He's taken a knee over here just in case he needs to jump in. But we can wait and do that all at one time if you'd like, whether the comments from the council or try to answer.
I just want to make sure that's stated, like, and then it gets explained later on. Thank you.
We'll come back to that.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I feel like this has been a long time coming. And I think it's an amazing opportunity for Kyle. I think, as we've stated before, it's a win for Kyle. Grocery stores, I think, belong on the east, but maybe on the southeast. Because if you put a grocery store there, it'll be within a mile of two other grocery stores. So I am not going to make my vote contingent on a grocery store being there because I think we have other places in Kyle that have a much bigger need than across the street from Costco and HEB. So with that said, I love everything about this. I do, I would like to see more shade. I like the, all the aspects of the family and the kids. And we understand summers are hot in Texas, but I also understand that winter, every other season is beautiful. And so giving us the opportunity to have our kids have an outdoor space, I think, is a big deal. I would love to see a museum of some sort out there. I think that would be great. Some kind of child's, I'm not going to demand it because if not, we just put them outside, right? But some kind of learnings that would be nice. But overall, I love what you guys have to bring and the ideas that you have. The pictures that I see on here are amazing. It's a great way to bring Kyle culture and art to Kyle. So I applaud you guys for that. Anything that you can do to bring the history of Kyle to that area, some murials or whatever, that would be greatly appreciated as well. So I, overall, I love it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You know, the comments. Brian, you need direction from the council?
Yes, sir. We wanted direction today. The purpose of this presentation was to. The purpose of this presentation was to present this to you publicly and to see if the council would like to direct me to continue negotiations and to bring forward a variety of other items that'll need to come to you, which would be the tours district, the zoning, as well as a development agreement. We have some of those a little bit later on your agenda, which we'll ask you to take up to get started with some of that, but that would be the direction I'm looking for, Mayor. And if you'd like to, we could go through the financials as well, but if you're ready just to move on with that, we could, we could do that as well.
Well, that's up to the council. The, your understanding is this, that's being proposed as a county-city tours, meaning that the county would participate as well. Have there been any discussions with the county? Are they aware of this project? Do we know if they're gonna support it?
They are aware of it. We believe that they're favorable towards the project as well, and we've had some of those discussions, and I know the developers have had discussions with the county as well, but we do believe that they're supportive of the project as well for some of the reasons that I think Andrew pointed out of the leakage going out of not only Kyle, but Hayes County as well.
Okay, any other questions?
So, yeah.
Councilor Zuneke.
So this is a similar project as the New Braunfels squared one? You said New Quest was involved in that one, 2006?
I wouldn't say, I mean, somewhat similar.
Similar in.
This one has a much more intricate green space component, kind of lifestyle component than we did there.
Right.
Really due to timing and when you develop it. I mean, retail, as we all know, has changed over the years. The boxes have gotten smaller, you know, the Amazon has gotten larger online, and so it changes. You know, retailers used to not want bowling centers in their developments. Now, everybody wants a bowling center and some sort of entertainment, and so.
Would you see like a Barnes and Nobles in here, something of that type?
We would love one. You know, it's, we're gonna get the best use that you could possibly come here. Again, we're at every, you know, show, every ICSC convention, and we're, again, we represent over 100 national credit retailers, so we're in front of all of them, knowing where they want to go, knowing where they want to be, you know, and if we could, we would love them. I mean, again, the biggest mixed use of all the tenants that we could find in this center really helped draw the lifestyle component, draw residents in to make it more of a destination center, and that's what we need, again, to make everybody successful.
So, in contrast, this one will have the golf carts and connectivity to the vibe, and New Braunfels does not have that part.
That does not have that, yes, sir.
Right, because that's a very successful development down there, and I definitely understand the leakage part of what you discussed. So, thank you. It's a great, great project.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Councilor Heiser, I thought I saw your hand up. I can't tell for sure if you're.
No, okay, thank you, Mayor.
All right, so you'd like the direction on this item?
Yes, sir.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to proceed developing the associated documents and bringing back the items related to Project Hopper Suit.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flor scale. It's a discussion on that motion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up is agenda item number 10. Receive a report, hold the discussion, provide staff direction regarding Project Chiapet.
Bear with me one second as I bring up the new project. Mayor and council, Victoria Vargas, Director of Economic Development, for the record. I have another exciting project to share with you, and this is Project Chiapet. We have a lot of fun with these project names. This one I'm very, also very excited to present to you. Let me make the big reveal here. We're talking about a four-acre tract of land, the northwest corner of 1626 and Coler's Crossing, just north of Hero's Memorial Park. It's the entrance to our brick and mortar district. We have a boutique grocer. It's a 23,000-square-foot Sprouts grocery store, and three additional retail shop buildings, totaling about 40,000 square feet. We have a representative from the developer here, Zach Rogers, who'll give you just a brief presentation on GBT and then on the Sprouts project and the retail component, and you can ask him questions. Thank you. Yeah, and you just have to forward it right there. See where my little person is.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you all for hearing this case tonight. My name is Zach Rogers with GBT Realty Corporation. We are located in Nashville, Tennessee. We too have a national footprint with many of the same retailers that New Quest does in different regions. Most of our shopping center development has been, big shopping center development has been in the southeast region. We do have a pretty wide footprint in Texas as well. We are primarily a retail developer, big box stuff, small box. We've done almost $800 Generals when the market turned in 2009. So we've done a little bit of everything, big, small, in between. We've formed relationships and kept relationships, and they've trusted us to expand their footprint, which has allowed us to go into new markets. This particular case, we developed a relationship with Sprouts Farmers Market, mainly in the Dallas/Fort Worth area, and now in the Austin/Kyle area. And this particular site, which you all are aware of, is very exciting. We believe in the vision. We believe in Kyle, Texas. We believe in Plum Creek. We think it's gonna be a great center anchored by Sprouts with the shops buildings as well. Here are a few examples of some recent work that we've done over the last couple of years, Florida, Alabama, Tennessee. We just finished one in Dallas, the heart of Dallas. We finished one, or one under construction in Fort Worth, one under construction in McKinney, Texas, just north of Dallas. We have several more in the pipeline, but we're probably most excited in Sprouts as well about this Kyle, Texas opportunity. I know that this has been presented to Victoria and likely to council as a starting point for discussions about the architectural elements of this project. We know that this is, again, a starting point. We have a lot of work to do. We're very early in design processes. So this is more just open discussion of what you like, what you don't like. I know some images have been shared with me, with some elements that you guys would like us to bring into this development, which we are all open ears, because we want this to be a successful development with the vision that you guys have for this area in conjunction with MoMark and what, everything that's going on in the Plum Creek area. So to that end, our official incentive request and terms have been discussed with Victoria and likely you all. Part tax abatement or rebates and part additional grant to make sure that we are able to include the architectural components to make this center, Sprouts in particular, and also the shops along Cromwell and activating Cromwell as best we possibly can, again, to buy into the vision that you guys have. And we want to make sure we do this right and move forward as best we can. With that, I will open it up to questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I just want to say I'm super excited.
Thank you, we are too.
I can already see myself buying pumpkins there next year.
Any other comments?
So.
Same thing?
Same thing, yes, sir. If the council's interested with us proceeding with this development and this incentive request, that you would give me direction to proceed and bring back a specific development agreement with these terms.
Councilor Brett Shaw.
Well, I was just gonna make the motion. So, a motion to, can you repeat that?
Just provide the city manager direction to bring back a development agreement for this project.
Okay, motion to bring back a development agreement for Project Chiapet.
All right, motion by Councilmember Brett Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Parsley that we approve. Agenda item number 10, giving direction to staff to bring this, this deal back. It's a discussion on the motion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero.
Argue.
See you soon. All right, next up is consent agenda items 11 through 13. Does anybody have a request to pull into these items? Councilor Flor scale.
Yes, thank you. Just to be consistent, I would like to pull agenda item 12.
11.
And, all right, we're gonna do them one at a time. All right, so first up is agenda item number 11, first reading and ordinance, amending chapter, or amending ordinance 1178, repealing ordinance 1242, Arts and Cultural Commission, amending ordinance 853, and repealing ordinance 1189, section 8, Economic Development Tourism Board, and amending ordinance 961, Ethics Commission. This item is presented by Ms. Schmeidz. Anything to add on it?
For me to pull it?
Oh, yes. Sorry, you were 11. I was thinking, I messed up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to slow down a bit and reconsider the repeal of the ordinance 1242 and keep the cultural part in the Arts Commission, because of a lot of the discussion and comments made from the community.
Comments on that? Councilor Flor scale.
Thank you. Well, I just want to address some concerns that I've heard. That's it, that I've heard. I'm not gonna specify. First and foremost, we're not taking away cultural events. That was never discussed. That was, I don't know how that got brought about. Cultural events have been held within the city for a long time, at the Parks Board and with the library. So when we decided to add it to the art, I thought it would, it wouldn't, we would focus on both, but we, I need everyone to understand this is just events. This is not culture. We're not saying, hey, there can be no culture in arts. In fact, as it's been stated time and time again, part of art is culture. So I want to remind everybody that the Art Commission is more than welcome to bring any kind of cultural art they want to the city. That's still a given, and so that's not gonna go anywhere. So the idea that we're not including culture in art is inaccurate. They can still bring whatever cultural art projects they like. In fact, I highly encourage it, and I anticipate it hopefully within the next, you know, I know they canceled their meeting for this month, but hopefully by next month, we could see something that would be great. And I do understand that art takes time. And my main concern was, it takes, events take a lot of time as well. And so when we decided, anybody who watched the Arts Commission being built, they should have understood what our goal was. And at that point, it was to bring some type of art to the city, something as small as a mural or a painting. And so I don't know if we've ever seen that, and it doesn't, that doesn't take any more than hopefully one or two meetings. And with that said, I want the Art Commission to be the Art Commission, and if later on they want to incorporate the events, the cultural events into it after the art is established, I'm okay with that, but I think this was a really new commission, and to give it two job duties was probably beyond our scope of understanding, at least mine. And so, again, if they wanted, if anybody wants to do events, cultural events, they're more than welcome to join the other boards that have already been doing it, did it in the past, and will continue to do it in the future.
Councilmember Zuneke.
Sorry, Councilmember Zuneke.
Yes. So I wanted to share a few things that I learned in talking to many of the people that were on the Arts and Cultural Board. The reason they feel, well, the reason, the feeling is felt very strongly to keep the cultural in the Arts Commission is because they really went above and beyond to give the city an entirely better experience in understanding culture and history. And some of the examples are that when they cooperate with the parks or with the library, they have sometimes better information, better understanding of some of the history, they have the resources and the network, and they're able to build and take the cultural part that the library supposedly can do to a little higher level. For example, Martin Luther King Day, when the library was doing something for that day, they had a book event, but the Arts and Cultural Commission turned that into more of a, of a, of a community dialogue event. They really took that to a higher speaker level. Another example is when the parks did a squeeze box event, they worked with the Arts and Cultural Commission to not just have music events out there, but also tell the story of the Hispanics in Kyle. That's the cultural part. That's what they bring. They have that sense of, of understanding and of knowledge and of enriching these experiences. Another third example is when they did Asian American Cultural Day. The Arts and Cultural Commission went out to the community, talked to restaurants to help provide more of this Asian types of, types of foods to bring to the library so that the Asian American Cultural Day would be that much more experienced in food and in history, and they were able to share much more experiences. So that's why I would ask this council to really think about what we're doing when we remove something like that from a commission and we try to reduce it down to just art. And in my opinion, it cannot be separated. Art is culture.
All right, any other comments? Motion's?
To approve or to what? I don't know if he did a motion.
I said to not repeal the ordinance was my.
Is that a motion?
I didn't have a second.
No, we need a clear motion, one way or the other.
The motion is to not repeal the ordinance 1242, which removes cultural from the Arts and Cultural Commission.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Zuneke, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, or Mayor Protem Tobias. Is there a discussion on that motion? Does that affect that, the way that motion was worded, does that affect the remainder of the items that are not of debate?
Mayor Page signs, city attorney for the record. I take that as, he's, there's only gonna be direction from council on one aspect of this ordinance. So that's how I would interpret that.
All of the other provisions of the consent item prevail, though, is that the question?
I think we only have direction on one aspect of it. We don't know what the rest of the ordinance.
Then you would have to have another motion to, for whatever other parts of the ordinance, if you wanted to approve those or deny those.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, so two votes is what we're at. Okay. All right, so, you know, my only comment on this is that I just think we need to be clear, again, you know, the, how many events? I don't think the word "culture" is actually the issue that's really at play here. I think it's really a question of four or five events and a certain, a certain way of using the budget that we're really trying to drill down on. So as far as I can tell, whether we eliminate the word "culture" or we don't eliminate the word "culture," we still have work to do, and that's just to be really clear about the scope of work that we're asking for from that group, and whether a few of the specific events that are being discussed as being sort of, having multiple groups that want to do them, what do we want to do with those particular events? We need to assign those events to an organization, otherwise, you know, even if we don't take a vote on this, there's, problems are still gonna persist. Councilor Parsley.
I just want to make clear, nobody's taking any events away. Nobody is removing any of the dialogues. I appreciate our city manager putting on the last rapport, all of the cultural events that the city of Kyle currently have, and I think that there were some missing. There are some parades that were missing. The International Women's Day and the things that the park did are missing from here. So we have a lot more than this. I see that our communications department has all the dialogues included under their umbrella. So no event is going anywhere. I was reading again the description of the Arts Board when it was created and the job, that didn't change in November, October, when the cultural got added. It says it shall serve in an advisory capacity to the city council on matters relating to the arts activities, arts events, and art projects that will benefit. the arts activities, arts events, and art projects that will benefit the residents. That has never changed. So, all we are doing is basically assigning some of, basically, all of the cultural events, some will go to the library, or have been a part of the library, a part of the Communications Department, and a part of the parks. No event is going anywhere. We embrace them, we love them, I actually had a discussion with Brian regarding some of the dialogues, and additional dialogues that we might want to bring. So, all we wanted is to keep it clean, give a task or direction on what the artistic features we wanted to see.
All right, any further discussion? So the vote is to eliminate the elimination of the cultural aspects, and allow that name to persist, with the understanding that if we do that, we still have to decide who handles these events. So, either way it goes, we still have to make that decision.
I thought it was stated on the Manager's Report, who handles these events? Public Library?
Well, that's what I believe the proposal is, how that will shake up, but if this vote fails, then that would be undone, and the question of who's controlling what events would resume, I would assume.
That's the way.
Otherwise, what are we voting on?
I'm trying to provide a little clarity, so the events, the summary of events that I provided in the Friday Report are all events that are currently provided, and they are individualized by departments, so there's, the library does some, the Parks Department does several, they're, they're split up across the city organization. This change is a result of the council's discussion a few weeks ago to, to restructure some of the boards and commissions, and to change some elements, and so that's what this item is to do, is to remove the cultural aspect. The discussion that council had was to make the Arts and Cultural Commission solely focused on arts, and that's what this, this element does. But a lot of the other events are still out there, if there's a discussion about, would you want to reorganize who does what, and how those are done, that could certainly be had, but those are already existing events that are there. Hopefully that, does that provide clarity to the issue?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it clear so that we know what we're doing.
I think, I think the point of the council discussion, as I understood it, was, you know, a few weeks ago, is that there's a lot of cultural events already being done in other departments, and should they be centralized here, or should they remain as they were? That's, as I understood it.
Park Department, I think, like, the library is doing an amazing job with all of the events, like, a lot of the cultural events, and our parks do a lot of the events, our Communications Department is doing the same. I, I believe that the focus we wanted was to allow for the Arts Commission to focus on the art activities, the art events, and the art projects, which is stated on the job description. Now, an art, artistic event, if there is a dance, folkloric, I don't know how you want to call it, that will be a representation of art and culture. Does it have to have the cultural name? It's artistic, I don't know.
All I can say is, the, the Arts and Cultural Commission Board that we currently have helped facilitate making all of those library events and park events much, much richer, much, much better, much more enlightening, much more historical, so we have those great events because we had that board, so if we start cutting back on it, we could, it's a step backwards.
Can we just have a, a listing of the events that the Arts and Culture Board wants to...
Colleen, do you mind, do you have anything to say? I'm sorry to interrupt. Okay.
So what are the events that the, that the Arts and Culture Board wants to own and operate and manage, use, use funds for? Is there a way for us to just talk about the specific events and make decisions on those? I just don't see that this particular action is gonna necessarily, everybody's gonna walk out still not knowing what to do.
I, I don't believe that the Board wanted to own any of the events, and Ms. Vanessa, please correct me if I'm wrong, but just to participate as their Board and represented, so they wanted to add on, I believe, to all of the events that were currently in place, possibly some new ones, but I don't know that we've gotten that far in that discussion.
I'm with Mayor Mitchell, this, this vote that we're gonna take isn't gonna make a difference, because at the end of the day, you guys can call it whatever you want, but if the events still go on through other parts of the city, if the dialogue is, is gonna be with communications, which it should be, then I don't want, I don't want to mask it and say, yeah, we're gonna keep the name there, and then we could take the events and put them somewhere else, it doesn't make any sense, that doesn't make any sense to me, it's very deceptive. So for me, I feel like the Progress for Peace stays with the city, and we have Samantha, 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 okay, let me, have her run it, you know.
Rachel.
Rachel, ding, see, I knew it, I was like, that doesn't sound right, sorry, Rachel. So, just have her continue to do that, and so, this doesn't need to be a fight for all, right? Like, we take it away from the boards and commissions altogether, and I don't, I don't even understand why it was there to begin with. It was never, and a board, there was never a board that was assigned, the Progress for Peace, that was council-led, and so if we want to take it away from council as well, we give it to Rachel, and then let the Communications Department head that. And then as far as events, I don't understand, I think, I thought, I felt like our library Board was doing an amazing job. If they want, if we want to give them recommendation on how to do better, better events, I think that's doable, and that makes sense, but then are we gonna say that if we, this is now the cultural, that our library can't do this anymore, or that other departments? I, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me. So, again, my hope, two years ago, was to see some art within the city. Would I like to see cultural art? I would, bring whatever cultural art you'd like to, but it doesn't have to be defined, we don't have to say, it just has to be cultural art. Art comes in all kinds of forms, and it looks all kinds of ways. So, I, again, I think that culture will still be involved in the art, it just won't be, it, it won't be something for them to focus and work on. It'll allow them the opportunity to focus on what we originally intended, which was art.
So the dialogues event, is that the only one? Is there another one?
I thought they were under Communications.
Yeah, I don't.
Correct.
Is it, is it already under Communications regardless of this vote?
That's correct.
Right, yes.
It's a progress event.
Okay, so what?
By Rachel, that's correct.
So what is the impact of this vote, one way or another? Outside of a word?
I think what we're trying to say is, we don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber or Vanessa, but I, I think the answer is, we don't have any other events other than the ones that are listed that are assigned to other departments currently.
Correct, correct.
So, the question would be, do you want the Arts and Cultural Commission to come up with additional events, or potentially centralize the ones that we have under their leadership? I mean, I think that's the question, but right now, they're all being done in other departments. Does that make sense?
I have a quick question.
That's how it's currently structured.
Do we have any other boards that have any other events, or anything that is under their umbrella?
If the Park Board takes on their events, I'm not sure what their responsibility role is.
That's a vast majority of them is in the Parks Board.
Right.
Okay.
So, the name for Arts and Cultural Commission, it was, I guess when that was created some time ago, it was, the thought was there would be a more, more cultural element to it, but I don't believe that it's materialized with events currently. Doesn't mean it can't happen in the future, but that's the, I think, the misunderstanding here. The Peace and Progress Event is a separate event, it's not been managed by that Arts and Cultural Commission. That's separate.
Correct.
Clear.
I'm just listening to the residents, and if they, if they feel passionate that they want to keep Arts and Cultural Commission running in the city, I'd say, other cities have it, we, we made that name change, we funded them in February, now we're telling them we don't want it, and we're gonna let library handle it, parks handle it.
Again, they, they handled it to begin with, and the $65,000 was for art in specific. It was funded under our art department.
They do handle it, but a lot of the research is coming from this, these dedicated board members.
I still think we should, regardless of what the name of the committee is, we should have a presentation on, either where we say specifically what the scope needs to be, or we allow for them to make a presentation of what they want to do, which they've already done once, but they can make another presentation, and we could adopt specifically, so that it's not so much about just the word or the heading, which I think has really sidetracked us from the conversation that we need to be having, which is, what specifically can we get aligned on between our body and, and Arts and Culture Board, and how can we alleviate that conflict? It seems to me that it's just pretty much pure conflict on the basis of misunderstandings of direction, and, and so, we just need to get clear on that. So, this vote doesn't really matter to me that much, that's really what we need to get clear on.
May I say something? When we visited the City of Prosper, and we met with their elected officials, and that's something that got discussed in here when we were talking about this last time, they talk about providing a task for the boards to do, and I think that there is no better, more clear direction than that. So, if, if, and that's to what you're saying, if, if they don't know what they need to focus on because they're waiting for the direction of council, then how can they also do what they were intended to be doing? So, either we come up with something to, to define that, or...
Postpone this.
I don't know.
Can we postpone this ordinance?
If you'd like, we could.
Can I change my motion to just postpone this till we get more feedback?
I think, yes, sir, certainly, we, we could, if you want to table that portion of the ordinance, you could pass the other portions, and then ask us to come back for a more detailed conversation, and maybe to the mayor's point about what are some options, what's currently done, and how, how do you want to structure this moving forward?
If we get right down to the details of it, we could probably find out exactly where everyone stands on each thing, and that would probably help alleviate a lot of the conflict.
So just to make sure we're, we're clear, Page is indicating Section 1 and Section 2 of this ordinance would need to be repealed, because that relates to the Arts and Cultural Commission and Art Board, so that would be essentially tabled, or you would, you pass everything else other than that piece.
Councilor Heiser. So are we postponing the discussion or the vote on 1242? Well, I've normally done it with a, I'd like to, you know...
Then I'd like to make a motion to postpone further discussion on ordinance 1242.
Uh, hang on, I'm sorry, I don't think the original motion was properly withdrawn, is what I'm saying, so.
Miguel, can you properly withdraw?
In, in the proper, formal way, I'd like to retract or remove my motion made to keep the Arts and Cultural Commission name, so we can postpone it.
Is that amenable to the Mayor Protem?
Oh, it was the second.
Yeah, all right.
And before, before any motions are made, just to clarify, if you want to approve the ordinance as drafted, except for the provisions dealing with the Arts and Cultural Commission, you would approve it with removing Section 1 and Section 2?
Just an approval vote.
How many sections are there?
Four, I believe, seven?
Yeah, but.
It includes severability and effectiveness.
It has to come out for a second reading.
It does, yes.
So, there's an opportunity maybe for us to get, in that time, just one really good meeting, to get clear on what the scope is, and then maybe we can put this to bed.
Page, so if, if I make a motion to approve ordinances 1178 and 853, 853 and 1189, does, does that, are we then just by nature tabling 1242?
The motion should be to approve Agenda Item Number 11, except for those items that relate to the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Except for Sections 1 and 2.
I wouldn't even say that, I would just say more general than that, so that we can be, give them flexibility on that.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass Item Number 11, with the exception of the ordinances applying to the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilor Floris Cale, that we approve Agenda Item Number 11, except for those items relating to the Arts and Cultural Commission. Is there discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 12, Approval Resolution, Creating Selection Criteria for Moderator and Panelists for the Dialogues for Peace and Progress Event Series, and Establishing City Staff's Role. Mr. Sonier.
This is the same information from last time.
Exact same, I just pulled it so I can vote no. Mayor Protem Tobias would probably need to make, should we wait till everybody gets back, to make sure we have, I don't want to, I mean, we can, but I don't want to skew the bits.
We have a quorum, so we can continue on with the presentation. We do have four of us here.
We have five.
I mean, we have it, I'm just afraid that it's gonna fail.
Well, if you want to go through the presentation, is that what you wanted to do?
No, we've already seen it.
It's the same presentation from the July 18th meeting, essentially just putting forth criteria for both moderators and panelists. Y'all passed it on first reading, this would be the second reading, and that's why it's on consent, but it was pooled for discussion, so I didn't know if y'all wanted to wait until we had all seven members on the dais.
Yep.
To have any conversation?
If you want to open up for a conversation, we've got Mayor back, and we're just waiting on the mayor. All right, did we open it up for discussion? Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. Well, I am here to speak on behalf of the great event we had last year, and to Ms. Anne Herbold's point, I do wish that, you know, even if you're running for whatever position you're running, and you're sitting right now in here in this dais, that you should be allowed to be a moderator for these events. I don't think it's, it's fair, with the love that we poured on, on the last event, that, that Councilmember Floris Cale is not allowed to participate as a moderator this year. So, those are my thoughts, I know we already voted on this, but it will be my ask that...
Could we, could we leave the policy in place, but vote for an exception this time? I would be supportive of that.
Absolutely.
Councilor Heiser, just a suggestion, I'm just trying to...
We also have the selection of moderator up as item, it's on the agenda.
Can we bring that forward right away?
It, it's up to y'all, yeah, I feel.
Can we have them?
Yeah, what, what number is that?
Twenty-one.
All right, twenty-one. Approve a resolution selecting a moderator for the Dialogue for Peace and Progress, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Councilor Heiser.
So we're combining these two things now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, I just want to say, since this came up because we wanted to stop candidates running for office from using the seat on Peace and Progress as a way to campaign, I don't think that it's fair for us to sit here and make exceptions for ourselves when, if that's, because that's exactly what's happening. We can't make, yes, we are nonpartisan elected officials, but this came up using partisan examples of partisan candidates running, and while I understand, you know, I didn't choose to have this brought up, like, I don't, you know, I don't want to keep you from doing it, but, I mean, what are we doing if we're just gonna sit and make exceptions for ourselves when it's convenient? So, I just want to...
Can I add something to that? I understand what you're saying, and the biggest issue, again, it was because twice it happened, somebody running, somebody wasn't even sitting in here, somebody that is not a council member, a mayor, but run for the county, were sitting as panelists. That's what caused the issue, it wasn't any of us. So, being a moderator does not give you the ability to advertise yourself during these events.
But the mere, your mere presence is an advertisement, and that is just part of the ju-
But your mere presence is an advertisement, and that is just part of the job, I understand is part of the job. But, look, if this had come up where we had said, asked for a waiver, that any candidate running for office could have, I don't know who said it tonight, maybe it came from here, Diane, if it was you, but a waiver could have been signed, I could have gotten on board with that from Jump Street, but that's not the action that we chose. So, at this point, again, we're just making exceptions.
All right.
The waiver would have been a smart thing to do, but it's, we didn't do it, and here we are.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as it's stated, and make an exception for Item 21, to allow Councilmember Flores Cale to sign a waiver saying she's not going to advertise her campaign, and allow me to be moderators for the Hispanic Heritage Month.
Can I say something?
Second for conversation.
All right, motion is made by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. We approve the policy and the resolutions, but we make an exception for Councilmember Flores Cale to serve as a moderator this September. Is there a discussion on that? Councilmember Flores Cale.
Right. So, I guess my question to you, Mr. Heiser, is how does it not bother you that I can't do my civic duties as a moderator, which I've done before, but then we have Mayor Mitchell doing the State of the City, and ribbon cuttings, and other events? So, if you want that for me, my question is, why isn't it across the board? And I'm not saying I don't want you to do it, I don't, I'm not saying I don't want you to do your job, I'm just asking you, Councilmember Heiser, how is that fair to me, when this is not something I'm doing for the first time, this is something I've previously done? I've shown an interest, and I've been active in the community, and I would use the same reason for Mayor Mitchell, he's done the same thing before. So, I think what I'm asking for is just a little bit of equality. I'm not asking to go and cut ribbons, and I'm not asking to do the State of the City. Those are, those are the duties that have been imposed by Mayor Mitchell for several years, and I understand that and respect it. With that said, being a panelist is different than being a moderator. Anybody can be a panelist. Moderators have traditionally been council members. And so, my question is, is why do I have to give up something that I wanted to do, because you don't feel like anybody running should get that opportunity?
I think he was arguing for that.
Just, yeah, to be fair, I had zero opinion about this until it was brought before council. I couldn't care less who, if someone belongs as a panelist or a moderator, then that's, that's what should happen. But that, that's not...
That's not how you voted. You voted the exact opposite.
Okay, okay, we're gonna go...
No, I understand.
All right, we're gonna go to Councilmember Zuniga now.
Because we wanted to make exceptions for ourselves.
Okay.
And that's just not...
Hang on, hang on. Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes, I have to agree, I mean, I don't, I'm not in favor of making exceptions for ourselves, I don't believe that we are more important than our residents, and this is not about a moderator. It seems like I want to be a moderator, I want to be a moderator, this is for the residents to do. So, the focus of the Dialogue for Peace is not about the moderator. So, we need to, we need to look at that, and train a resident who wants to do it, and have them moderate, let them have their opportunity to be heard. We have enough of it up here.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Parsley.
This event is for the residents, you're 100% right, which is why I have never, and I probably will never, apply to be a panelist, because the panelists are the center of attention, is their discussion what really makes the best of this event. To create consistency, and I said this the last time, is what I was suggesting, that as council members, as elected officials, it should be a part of our job for all of us to moderate events, this type of event, this dialogue, it should be consistent thing. That's it. It's not about, I want to be, and I want to be. There are three dialogues, I've only moderated one, and I am really looking forward to moderating the next one. With that, I call the question.
Second.
All right, the question's been called and seconded, that's an undebatable motion, roll call vote.
Can we get a repeat?
The, well, the motion is to approve the policy, but to allow for Councilmember Flores Cale to serve as a moderator in September. So, the first vote is to cease debate and force a vote. Roll call.
Heiser. Mitchell?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Is this to give an exception?
Yes.
No, this is to call the vote.
Call the vote.
Call the vote, yes.
Flores Cale?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Hi.
Tobias?
Hi.
All right, question has been called, roll call vote.
Tobias? Flores Cale?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
I, no, I voted against this, the policy originally. No.
Parsley?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Zuniga?
No.
All right, motion...
Heiser?
Oh, sorry. You can't let me pass on this one. Pretend I'm not here. All right, motion fails. So, which way do you want to go? Do you want to approve the policy, or do you want to amend the policy to allow for anyone to be, to participate? Because I still don't know the direction this is going.
I heard the motion passed.
It passed.
Four to three.
You voted no? You voted no? Three nos. Oh, Tobias voted yes. I'm sorry, I was trying to keep it up. All right, motion passes, four to three. All right. Next up is Agenda Item 13, Second Reading, Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, ordering a general election to be held November 7, 2023, for the election of mayor, city council districts 2 and 4, to serve three-year terms. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale, is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item 14, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution Setting a Public Hearing for the Creation of Tax and Credit Reinvestment Zone. Ms. Libby.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Stephanie Libby, with Norton Rose Fulbright. This resolution is related to Project Hot Pursuit that you all heard about earlier this evening. This is a resolution that would call a public hearing for creation of a TIRS. Public hearing would be called on September 19. So, this resolution would authorize newspaper publication to notify the public, and then also authorize city and its consultants to prepare a preliminary project and finance plan, and that preliminary project finance plan would be presented on the 19th as well. So, happy to have, answer any questions that you all have about proposed timing, or if any, follow-up questions regarding the project.
Questions? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14.
Motion by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve Agenda Item 14. Is there discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Next up is Agenda Item Number 15, Consideration, Discussion of Possible Action on a Resolution Accepting the Voluntary Petition for Annexation of Approximately 37.99 Acres of Land, more or less, Being Located in Hayes County, Texas, and Adjacent and Contiguous to the City Limits. Ms. Atkinson.
Will Atkinson, for the record, Director of Planning. Just a moment, I'll pull this up on the screen. I am not sharing the screen, so, okay. Just one moment. To summarize it, I apologize, my computer's trying not to work. As previously discussed with the presentation for Project Hot Pursuit, this is the, one of the first permits you will see ahead of you for the Caraway Project to be annexed. It's approximately 37 acres, and following annexation, there will be zoning in the next couple of weeks, along with a development agreement, and also a TIRS as well. To keep it short and brief, this is in the Monarch Water CCN, it's in the city's wastewater CCN, and the Patinales Electric Cooperatives CCN for Power. We are excited about this project.
All right, any questions, comments? Councilmember Flores Cale.
I do have a question for the developers. Once this is all approved, my question would be, when do you guys plan on the actual groundbreaking? Shovel ready?
You know, it's gonna take us a couple of months, I mean, once we close on the site, we're gonna immediately go into design. That's, it's hard to say exactly when, but, I mean, our hopes are within, you know, the next year.
The next year, okay. All right, that's it.
As soon as we can, we want to start immediately.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 15.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Tobias, that we approve Agenda Item 15. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item 16, Resolution of City of Kyle, Texas, Approving Professional Services Agreement Between the City of Kyle and Home Asset, Inc., New Quest, Authorizing the City Manager Execute the Agreement Providing for Open Meetings Act and Other Related Matters. Ms. Atkinson.
This is one more item related to the Caraway Project. It is simply to make sure that our third-party economic group and legal are paid for their time putting all these documents together for the Caraway Hot Pursuit Project.
All right, Councilmember Flores Cale.
I like for people to get paid, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 16.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Tobias, that we approve Agenda Item 16. Is there discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Will. All right, next up, Agenda Item 17, Approval Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with the ABIP PC Certified Public Accountants San Antonio, Texas, to provide independent financial audit services for the City of Kyle for a three-year contract term, with two one-year contract extensions. Mr. Mohit.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. For the record, I'm Perez Mohit, City's Director of Finance. Agenda Item Number 17 before you is requesting your consideration and approval of a professional services agreement. Should I pause?
No, keep going.
Your audit is a riveting conversation, clearly.
Looks like it, looks like it.
What was your joke, Perez?
We'll wait, we'll wait for the next visioning session.
Okay.
So, Agenda Number 17 before you is for your consideration and approval of a professional services agreement to retain the services of ABIP PC Certified Public Accountants as the city's independent auditors. The term of the agreement is for three years and two one-year extensions. The purpose of the agreement is based on city charter requirements. The city charter requires that the city's external auditor, independent auditors, cannot perform audits for more than five consecutive financial years. So, the last auditor finished their fifth audit of the city's financial statements as of last fiscal year. So, beginning this fiscal year, we have to retain the services of a new auditor. In June, this staff went out with a request for proposal for independent financial audit services. We had a response from 10 CPA firms. Most of them were regional firms. We had a selection criteria, five major selection criteria, that we evaluated each proposal against, and I'll go over those briefly. Firm qualifications and experience, qualification and experience of audit staff that will be assigned to the Kyle project, audit methodology and approach, the audit schedule, the city charter is very rigid in terms of when the audit has to be completed, and then finally, the estimated fees and hourly rates. City staff recommends that council approve this professional services agreement, but before I stop, I would like to introduce two partners of the firm that are here tonight with us, Ms. Janet Pittman and Mr. Michael Del Toro. If y'all would please come up. I would like them to say a few words about their firm, and answer any questions that council may have, and I'll come back and answer any questions y'all may have for me.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Mike Del Toro, I'm a partner with ABIP. Here to present who we are, we're a firm based out of San Antonio and Houston, we're a regional firm, small offices in New Braunfels and, what's that town down there? Pierceville. Yeah, I knew it was a P. Both Janet and I are, have been partners with the firm since its existence in the San Antonio area. We both were members of a firm that dated back some 45 years in San Antonio. Both her and I are well-versed in auditing local governments. Under our experience in the area, we do the city of San Marcos, we've audited them for 10-plus years. Hayes County is also a client of ours, as well as Comal County, and we've, in the past, had Lockhart, City of Lockhart, and then we also do the school district in San Marcos. So, we work well in the area, we are a firm that believes in being on-site, so we plan on working closely with Perez and his staff, and we look forward to, if you approve us, to working closely with your city and staff, so. Questions?
Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes, thank you for being here. I have a, I guess, a question. What exactly is the audit look for? What kind of, I mean, do you find irregularities? What is the audit entail? What is it that you're looking at to explain to the residents? What it is, and what have you found in your work that maybe should hint that maybe something's off?
Sure, so, it's very prescribed method for auditing, there is standards we have to follow, there's generally accepted auditing standards that are issued by the AICPA, and all firms have to follow these standards. The primary purpose is to ensure that your financial statements that you are issuing and providing to your citizens and bondholders and such are presented in accordance with standards for reporting, that's the primary thing. But involved in that audit is also a review of controls in how you process disbursements and payroll, and how you receive money within the city. And so, we do a detailed review of those processes to look for where there might be irregularities within the system of controls, which may indicate something of a more severe situation. We're also looking at compliance with laws and regulations that the city may have, obviously, if you're getting federal funds, we're looking at those to ensure that they're being performed in compliance with the regulations with which those funds have been issued under, so.
Pretty good answer. So, like you said, when you're looking for controls of how you're paying, or how money's transferred, like what, like what would be something of that, of that nature? Credit card, or checks?
Could be credit card, could be checks, wires that you issue through your banks. It's all done through a risk assessment, identifying where risk may be. It starts with inquiry of staff on how things are processed, along with validation of observation of those things that they present to us, on how they perform functions, so.
And so, y'all did give us the annual financial report?
We do, yes.
Is that just part of it, too?
So, you know, it's prepared by city staff, we actually, we validate to make sure that they're in accordance with standards. The only thing that belongs to us in your bound document is those letters that have our letterhead on them. The management letter would be where, if we identified irregularities through the audit, that would be presented, and that's a separate letter that goes to council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Motions? Councilmember Flores Cale.
I'd like to, sorry, make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17.
Second.
Motion by... Motion by Councilmember Forescale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve Agenda Item 17. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 18, Receive a Report, Hold a Discussion and Provide Staff Direction Regarding Amending the City of Kyle Purchasing Policy. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor and Council, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager. As you know, the city manager in previous budget workshops and council meetings has expressed his desire to really look hard at our purchasing policy, at our procurement procedures, and be able to make those processes more efficient, allow staff to be more nimble and better able to track the purchases that we're making. Today, you've seen that by, we've added two positions in next year's budget for your consideration and approval. Those positions will focus on the procurement process, tracking contractual things, and making sure that the policies and procedures that we have currently are followed. We've reviewed the purchasing policy thresholds, make sure that those are in alignment with state law in our comparison cities. We've reviewed council actions with regards to purchasing approvals, associated dollar amounts, and amount of time council spends on those. And we've also reviewed the city manager's purchasing authority as it currently exists, and we've compared that to our comparison cities. Currently, our purchasing policy allows the city manager $15,000, up to $15,000 for budgeted items or budgeted funds to spend without council approval. Transactions below $3,000 may be processed with a simple purchase order. Transactions up to $14,999 may be processed with a purchase order and approved by the department head. Transactions up to $49,999 require three or more quotes, online notice, and may be approved by the city manager. Transactions $50,000 and greater require an RFP, sealed bids, and council approval prior to a purchase order being issued. This chart just kind of reiterates it in graphic form, those are current policy, and with a note that the policy we're working off right now was last amended in 2016. So just kind of reviewing council transactions and approvals for this past, or for this current fiscal year, you've approved 300, or there's been 324 total purchasing transactions above $3,000 this year. That total amount is, in round numbers, $70.5 million. Of those, the transactions that are between $3,000 and $15,000, it's 131 transactions totaling just over $1 million, or 1.46% of those budgeted items. Between $15,000 and $50,000, 77 transactions totaling just over $2 million, or just over 3% of those expenditures. Above $50,000, 116 transactions that were all approved by council totaling just over $67 million, or 95.5% of all the dollars that were approved were those items that were over $50,000. So 193, or 60% of the purchasing transactions approved by council were approved under the current policy. Six, just over 69 million of those total purchasing expenditures required council approval. If you were to increase the city manager's purchasing authority to $50,000, which matches our comparison cities and is allowed by state law, that would further reduce the council approval required agenda items by 40%, but still allow council approval for over 95% of the budgeted items that you see. Let me stop there and ask if there's any questions, because that's the meat of what we're talking about.
Go ahead.
Okay. So this shows the approval limits that our comparison cities have. Kyle is that little bitty bar on the left, and the city of Austin, their city manager gets up to $58,000. You'll see all the other cities are $50,000 except for Buta. That city manager is limited to $49,999.99. So this will put us above him. So to make this change, allow the city manager purchasing authority between, up to $50,000 from the current 15. It aligns to state legislation. It still provides transaction transparency that's important to the city manager, staff, and council, and our public. The council maintains direct approval over 95% of the current spend. It optimizes the city council's time to really be able to focus on those big-ticket items and allow the city manager and city staff to still be nimble with those smaller items. An example would be if we have to replace, let's say, dehumidifiers on the air conditioners in City Hall, which that dollar amount's going to be about $40,000. Right now, we would have to wait till the next council meeting to bring that forward to you for approval. And then the new policy, the city manager would be able to directly approve that and set that motion that much quicker. So it optimizes the city council's time. It aligns high-volume, low-cost and low-volume, high-cost transaction with appropriate controls. So your options are, you can maintain the city manager's authority at $15,000. You can approve a change to the purchasing policy to allow the city manager's authority to extend an increase to $50,000, or you can approve a different amount.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Does anybody have any questions? I fully support this, so. Motion to approve? Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Forescale.
I just want to say, I do have concerns, and I look at the numbers and it's silly that we're at $15,000, but I also have to remember that Kyle is growing very quickly, and so I understand why it's low, and I understand why it needs to be high, but I'm going to be honest, it makes me nervous to make such a big leap. Is it possible to, we don't want to micromanage, but doing this, that's a huge increase. Is there ways that we can get a notification if you spend $50,000? Is there something that we can do? Is, like, maybe you add it to the report? It doesn't have to be, you know, I think $45,000 to $50,000 is a good number that we should be apprised of, especially when it used to be just 15, but some kind of notification, I think, would make me feel a little bit better, as opposing to say, hey, I'd rather see it at 40.
Yeah, I think one of the ways I've managed this in the past is just to provide some kind of procurement report to the city council on perhaps a quarterly basis, and it would just list what the transactions are, and if you want to see anything over $40,000, we could have those in a transaction report that we just provided to the council. We could send it out in the Friday report and list what it was, and if there's any questions, we could certainly follow up with that. But that's a way we could add some transparency to that and show you those transactions.
Okay. Would that be okay with everybody else if you added into the policy a procurement report? Like, you say quarterly, right?
Yeah, I think quarterly would be fine if that gives us the ability to, again, that's something I want to have those, the purchasing staff, when we get them on board, that'd be one of those things I'd be asking, asking them to do, develop a report on.
Okay. I can vote on that.
Okay.
How about for between 15 and 50?
Okay, that'd be perfect.
All right. Well, there's already a motion on the table, so I'd like to amend the motion to direct the city manager to produce a quarterly procurement report, itemizing the transactions between 15,000 and 50,000.
Second.
All right, motion to amend is made by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Forescale. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Now we'll take a vote on the entire item. Motion to approve, oh wait, sorry, it's already on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 19, Receive a Report, Hold Discussion, Provide Staff Direction Regarding Proposed Edits to Ordinances Related to Potential Regulation for Use of Public Areas. Mr. Atkinson.
All right, this time it works. This is awesome. Yeah, just put it on presentation mode. Okay. So at the August 1st meeting of this month, Yalla City Council voted four to three to ask staff to prepare a report, to make edits to ordinances, to close loopholes in our begging ordinance, if you will. And so since then, we've been working together with planning and police and administration to figure out where those, where those items are and what have you. So we actually have some multiple ordinances that are passed in several different sections that actually provide a pretty comprehensive anti-loitering, begging ordinances. And actually, quite honestly, in my opinion, they are more robust than the city of Austin's, because ours apply to the entire city, and the city of Austin's primarily apply just to the downtown area. But essentially, what it boils down to is we don't allow people to unlawfully stop or loiter in hazardous or congested areas. We don't really allow solicitation and what have you, with a few exceptions related to fundraising for emergency services, selling newspapers with a reflective vest, or conducting by, or being conducted by nonprofit with a permit in a reflective vest. This was passed in June of '21, where we don't allow camping obstruction of public facilities, sidewalks, you name it, or aggressive confrontation. Additionally, we don't allow camping on private property, storing personal belongings were prohibited, and what have you, and cooking. I'll keep going here. Can't be blocking a path for begging or anything like that, following a person walking away from a solicitor, no yelling, threatening, or abusive language. We do, as a side note, do have peddlers permits for the businesses that do walk the neighborhoods and what have you. They do have to have permits and what have you. And from a KPD response to the transient population, KPD does do welfare checks, they do evals for safety and field level for mental health with referrals, voluntary rides to shelters, phone calls to family, friends, and check-ins, and database checks for missing persons, et cetera. Just from a solicitation incidence this year, or last year with KPD, they had a total of 123, about 10 and 1/4 per month on average, and for 2023 so far, it's actually down to about seven per month on average. So it's actually, looks like it's trending down. City of Austin, as I previously stated, they have, it's really primarily just for downtown, where if they really can put a regulatory authority on the city. And they do a lot of peaceful panhandling around the rest of the city. So here's some options. So we already know there is the one option about, we'll call it the Venmo edit, and we're going to be working, making sure we're working with legal to make sure we adequately account for that, but also not violate First Amendment rights and what have you. A couple of other items that we identified were repealing the exceptions in Section 47-33(c)(2) and (3) for exceptions for newspapers or by permit in medians. It's just plain dangerous, we believe. Also, possibly add language from the city legal concerning those soliciting by advertising in any form of payment. Add prohibitive language for activities of entertainment, such as music played by any instrument, performances, et cetera, on the streets without a proper permit. So we're looking for further feedback from Yalla City Council and direction. Option two, option three, option four, all three. It's up to y'all.
Councilmember Parsley.
Is there any way that we don't amend the ordinance other than include the electronic payment? Just that, that would be number three.
That is number three.
Add the language from city legal concerning those soliciting by advertising any. So I, I'd like to make a motion to go with option number three.
All right, motion's made for option number three. Is there a second? All right, motion seconded, made by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve option number three on Agenda Item Number 19. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Heiser.
Just to make sure I'm abundantly clear here. Going with option three, we are striking all of the other options. We are making no other changes to the current ordinance other than the addition of a Venmo logo. Yes? Anyone else want to give me, yeah? Take all the guesses I can here?
Any kind of?
Fine, okay.
Yeah, I would just clarify that the electronic payment, Venmo is one of the brands, Cash App, but there may be others in the future, so the language would be a little bit more generic.
But not PayPal. Leave PayPal out of it.
All right.
And if I may add to what Councilmember Parsley was referring to, I did see that individual the other day at the corner with a drumstick, and fell out of his hand, rolled underneath the car, and he went in there and got it, and a car nearly took off, and he got ran over. There's that aspect. There's also the aspect of the backup traffic that, that could be a distraction on that end. But at the same time, if we're asked, we're doing the ordinance, it's got to be all the way across. We've got to be real strict on that. Consistent.
Councilor Forescale.
I briefly emailed back and forth with Chief Barnett and, I believe, Page, and to me, it wasn't just about the Venmo, it was like about the safety aspect to it. And so is, is there a way that we can make sure that walking areas, such as a crosswalk, doesn't have any stationary either people or, I don't think it's safe to sit there and stay in one spot when people are supposed to be walking back and forth.
I, Councilmember Forescale, I do that, I do believe that is already covered in existing ordinances about blocking public accessways and what have you from sitting and lying and what have you, and loitering.
Well, I think it, I think, I'll ask Chief Barnett.
He could probably provide more detailed information.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, chief police, for the record. Very specifically, the individual playing the drums had positioned himself in an area that was not blocking a walking pathway or a place where anybody else is going to be using that sidewalk or curb area. He was positioned basically on a little piece of an island that nobody's going to walk to because there is no sidewalk in that area. So as you explore the language, you might want to include language, if Page says we can, that talks about that kind of area on the concrete. So had a, had a person on a bicycle or walking or wheelchair or whatever been in that area, and we were solely looking for him to be blocking the pathway. He was not. He found this little isolated piece of concrete that is not otherwise used, and that's why we couldn't move him. So if you can incorporate that kind of language that covers that entire concrete area around, adjacent to the roadway, that would certainly help our officers use that definition.
To the point that he had the ordinance printed in paper and knew exactly what he could get away with, so.
Yes, ma'am. He had pre-printed, he had printed our ordinances and had those in his possession when the officers went to confront him.
Pretty clever.
So he's a very educated person, but in his case, he was advertising, you're covering one aspect of what he was doing, he was advertising for money using forms of electronic payment. So what you're also talking about would cover that, and I'm going to assume that most people would not want to sit out in that hot sun and play music without asking for money, so. But if you're going to talk about the crossway, the crosswalks, which are included in our ordinances, we could enforce that today.
He was at the crosswalk, though, right?
No, he was at, there's a piece of concrete out of the way of the crosswalk where people would not walk, because we went out and looked. We drove by there.
I think he might have moved, though, because I think when I got that, received the picture from Councilmember Tobias.
Yeah.
It looked like he was at, like, the walk.
Okay, yes, he would have been in the walkway when we would have seen him, we could have moved him because he's blocking that walkway. Where, where we saw him, he was just north of the crosswalk in an area that is not accessible from across the street. It's not meant for people to cross there. It's in one of those turnaround locations. People are not advised, or there's no crosswalk to cross to that piece of concrete where he was at, so we didn't move him because he wasn't blocking a pathway.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, for me, it was all about safety, because I did hear the story that he dropped his drumstick, and I was like, holy moly, if he would have went after that, or even if somebody was trying to, like, take a picture to do the, whatever reason, like, it's just not safe to have people out there.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Chief, yeah. So I do agree that it's unsafe to be panhandling on the not-allowed areas, but...
Actually, in the state of Texas, there is a state law on the books that prohibits you from soliciting from the roadway, and it actually, the violators would include the people who are giving the money from the vehicles and the person seeking money, because that person's not supposed to enter the roadway. There's a, there's a very generic basic state law that's out there. The city here has tried to enhance our laws and give our officers more power to make our roadway safe, so we even have a few more ordinances, but yes, it is illegal and it is absolutely dangerous.
So, so some of the research that I was looking at says that people that want to help should try to reach out to the shelters and help the shelters, and that kind of... try to reach out to the shelters and help the shelters, in that kind of, so that the need, the funds can go where the need is. What else can we possibly do to kind of assist these people, get them on their feet? I know we transport them out of the city to a shelter if they'd like to go, but can, is there anything else, I mean, to treat them with a little respect and dignity, as I know that they're probably having in a hard situation in life?
Some certainly are. There's a wide spectrum of individuals that we encounter. There are some that are homeless and are seeking money for survival, and generally, they will accept some offer of assistance. They'll accept a ride to a shelter, they will accept either food vouchers or hotel vouchers, or honestly, sometimes our officers will cover hotels for people that are down on their luck for a while, and they'll go to a hotel and pay for it out of their pocket and get these people a room for the night to cool down. As you move towards the middle and the other end of that spectrum, there are people that choose to be there that are not necessarily suffering from mental illness, maybe they're not even homeless, they're there more by choice as a source of income and a lifestyle that they've chosen. So we encounter both ends of that spectrum. Our officers are trained to offer them all kinds of assistance that may be out there from our partners, to include shelter, to include food, to include rides. The officers are provided cell phones, they will ask them if they want to call their family members just to check in, because sometimes these folks haven't called home in a long time if they don't have a cellphone. So they offer them the ability to make telephone calls, really, anything that we can offer, we try to do to help them. What we don't do is force them if they are not endangering themselves and they are not otherwise wanted or a need to remove them. If they're of sound mind and they're making those actions free of choice, then obviously we don't take them and take their liberty away from them to make those choices.
So are we encountering 10 panhandlers per month in the city of Kyle? Is that the report that I was looking at?
It's 10 calls for service that lead us there. They're not necessarily always panhandling, some are more welfare concern. People will call in and they see what they believe to be a homeless person.
And if they're a minor, if they're a minor chief, I mean, do we find any teenagers, runaways?
Rarely, that number would be rarely, very small. Yeah, it's generally adults. We do encounter mental illness, and our council has taken on a great effort to try to improve our services for those that are suffering a mental health crisis. So I would say that's a big component of that. And as we move forward to providing those services, we're doing our part as a city. We do have regional partners that offer services, and we do have agencies here in Hayes County that will respond and try to offer those services in the field if necessary. If they're in crisis, we can take them even to a seating hospital for evaluations. The rest are generally, it's a financial situation, our personal choice, and we try to balance that out with what's the right thing to do. But we do offer them services, including rides and the stuff that I mentioned.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Parsley.
I just wanted to add to what you were talking, Councilmember Suniga, there is, there are resources, and I'm really glad of, you know, for all the work that you guys are doing. There was a particular case, a lady that had a shopping cart. She got, I even pulled over to talk to her, and Commissioner Cohen stopped by and offered to take her to a shelter and offer several options. I know officers talked to her. Some of them really don't want to get help.
That's true. We try to balance what's the right thing to do for their safety, welfare, and dignity versus what their rights are as a citizen to live a certain lifestyle, so.
All right, anyone else? Motion's for option three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 20, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding water conservation programs. Ms. Kathy Raker.
Mayor, Councilmember Kathy Raker, for the record. I wanted to start off by thanking Councilmember Heiser for bringing this discussion forward. Okay. Water conservation programs. What if my screen is moving forward, but it didn't move up there? Okay. Oh, okay, my apologies. Okay, so the introduction, staff was tasked with researching the city's previous water conservation rebate program. After a little bit of digging, I was able to find out in 2013, the city had created a water conservation rebate program due to receiving a fine from EAA, which is the Edwards Aquifer Authority, for overpumping from the aquifer. In lieu of the city paying those monies to EAA, EAA agreed to let the city use that money to offer rebates in the form of water conservation initiatives. This program ran from 2013 to 2015 and was administered by the Public Works Department and utility billing to promote water conservation measures. Rebates included landscape conversions, irrigation system upgrades, low-flow toilets, showerheads, dual-flush conversion kits, toilet tank flapper repair kits, faucet aerators, faucet mount sprinkler timers, high-efficiency appliances, and rainwater harvesting systems. The impressive thing was the rainwater harvesting system was up to a $5,000 rebate, not exceeding more than 50% of the system, the cost, more than 50% of the cost of the system. Roughly 28 people out of a population of 33,000, I used the 2014 because the program ran from 2013 to 2015, so I just picked the middle one, took advantage of those rebates, and the city actually spent more on the advertising of the rebates than we actually paid out in the total rebates. And based on the previous rebate program data, I could not find any applications that were submitted for rainwater harvesting systems, which is kind of unfortunate. Central Texas typically receives little to no rain from June to September, and typically our wettest months on record for Central Texas are May and October. So if there is no rain during those months when water is needed, most residents and businesses will not see a return on their investment, and it will not curtail water usage during the hot summer months when it comes to rainwater harvesting. More than likely, if you do have a rainwater harvesting system, you're going to use most of that water in your system, probably in the month of June, and then if we don't get rain, there's no more rainwater to be used. My screen is off one now. It's messing me up, my apologies. Okay, there are pros to rainwater harvesting. Independent, non-potable water supply, depending on the size of the system installed, it may reduce water bills, it is suitable for irrigation, rainwater harvesting systems can reduce soil erosion, and rainwater is better for plants and landscapes than treated potable water due to having a higher nitrogen content. The cons, unpredictable rainfall can be a high initial cost, rainwater harvesting systems do require regular maintenance, you have to clean out your gutter systems and clean out the traps and stuff like that on these systems. There are storage limitations, and typically, rainwater harvesting systems are not hooked up to your existing irrigation system, unless you have a backflow prevention device, you cannot, you don't want crossconnection happening. Looking at rainwater harvesting, you're probably going to, the city would probably want to create design standards, and I'll have a slide here in a minute to show you some photos. These are just some different things to consider if we do want to look at rainwater harvesting systems. Again, you'd probably want it dark colored with an internal liner to prevent sunlight, and that's so that you keep algae from overgrowing in those tanks, along with those other bullets. Here's some of the photos that I saw, and again, this is why I think we'd want to come up with design standards, because I don't really think that we want the blue 55-gallon drums around the city, and so that's why I just wanted to kind of mention where probably we would want some design standards for consistency. While I was looking at our previous rebate system, I started kind of, of course, I fell down a rabbit hole. I started thinking, okay, water conservation, what are some of the things that the city can do that might make a greater impact if our true goal is water conservation? So that led me to zero-scaping and something else that I saw, which was water saver landscapes. And that's something that the city of San Antonio does, and I thought it was a really interesting concept, so I'll dive into those. Zero-scaping, okay, so according to the Texas Water Development Board, 50 to 80% of a home's water usage is used for outdoor watering. Zero-scaping uses significantly less water than sod, and the plants are drought tolerant. Pros, uses drought tolerant plants, reduces water bills, reduces environmental impact because you can use less fertilizer, can be pollinator friendly, that is not a typo, also attracts birds and butterflies depending on the plants used, and this does not mean that all grass has to be removed. Cons, it is expensive with a large initial investment typically, because also, too, these are a lot of times professionally designed, and some people just don't like the appearance of zero-scaping. I wanted to include these photos, because as you could probably tell, the one on the left is Costco, which is 100% zero-scaped, so if you go out there, all of their landscape is zero-scaped, as well as TXB, which is the new gas station off of Lehman, is the right-hand photo, and those are both zero-scaped. Water saver landscapes would be something good possibly to consider for residential. Again, it's something that the city of San Antonio does. It's a, it's a, zero-scaping on a smaller scale, so it covers a smaller area, it's less initial investment at a lower cost, it's a smaller commitment. You have to remove at least 200 square feet of grass in any sprinklers in that area, which is roughly about the size of a parking space. And city of San Antonio does not allow any permanent irrigation in the new beds. City of San Antonio offers a $100 rebate for doing one of these conversions in residential These are some before and after photos that I thought were really interesting. So if you look at the photo on the left, the top is before, the bottom is after, again, you're not removing all of the grass, you're taking out sections of grass and you're using mulch or other materials. The middle photo is a landscape strip. I always, I don't know why, that just doesn't stick for me. On the left, it shows it has grass. On the right part of that photo, it shows that it was actually removed with non-sod. The photo that's on the far right-hand side, I would actually probably consider that more zero-scaping, because I really don't see hardly any grass, but I thought it was an interesting photo. Here is another water saver landscape, this is a before photo. Here's an after. So again, you're not, you're not removing all the grass, and so it's a nice option for residential. This was something while I was out driving around preparing for this presentation, it just so happens, I was driving my HEB, and I was like, no. One thing to possibly consider is, one thing that is, we might want to discourage is trying to allow people to irrigate such small, little, grassy areas. Again, that would be something for y'all to consider, because when you're trying to irrigate, especially spray irrigation, a lot of it, you can pretty much tell in the photos, it's ending up in the street and on the sidewalks. So we had, we did have some recent ordinance changes in Chapter 54 landscape code. We are encouraging rainwater harvesting systems. In fact, TXB did install one. In Chapter 54 as well, zero-scaping, we are allowing zero-scaping in any zoning district under the following conditions. I'll let y'all go with those. The, something else, utility billing, I thought this was interesting. So when it comes to water conservation, the city of Kyle has a tiered water rate structure, so the more water a customer uses, the rate per thousand gallon increases. So we are trying to discourage people from overusing water, just by the way that we have structured our rates here in Kyle. Also, too, every month, utility billing runs a report for every account, looking for anomalies or outliers. For an example, if you normally have a lowered water use, and they run this report and they notice that it's exponentially higher, utility billing will actually flag that meter and send a meter tech out to research to see if there's a leak. Utility also has a new, or 2019, has a water leak adjustment policy that was approved by city council in June of 2019. So those are things that we're currently already doing. You've got a lot of options. We can make no changes, we can re-implement the previous rebate program, require new commercial sites to install at least 50% zero-scaping during construction. Again, that won't actually cost the city anything, because it could be something that we require them to do while they're under construction. We can give incentives, rebates for existing commercial sites to install zero-scaping. We can give incentives, rebates for residential water saver landscaping. We can require new commercial multifamily sites to use drip irrigation. Again, spray irrigation is one of those things that you do lose a lot of the water through evaporation and possibly wind drift. And then, of course, you have other. So you've got a lot of things to think about.
I have a quick question. How would the rebate look like? Like if a residential customer said, hey, I have a lot of grass on my front yard and I want to do zero-scape, is that, will they come to the city? How much would we give? Like, is it $100? Is there any potential for us to work with any of the local businesses to see if we can partner in getting some discount for those rebates? I just want to have an idea how will that look like?
With the water saver option, again, I was just kind of looking strictly at San Antonio's, they do have a document online, and I can definitely share that, but pretty much it was you remove approximately 200 square feet of grass, and you do have to remove, it would require probably myself to go out there and verify that the irrigation was removed, because again, you don't want people irrigating.
Yeah.
That kind of defeats the purpose. And then they can get $100. We could have a higher rebate, you know, we could set what that rebate would be.
I am all in favor of doing this. I just don't know, because, you know, exactly to your point, we will need to send a staff member to make sure that, you know, we're giving a rebate and the person is actually changing their landscaping.
And I would have to work with finance to make sure that, because I can't write checks. I don't want to write checks.
I am, I'm 100% for requiring this to commercial sites, the zero-scaping and the artificial turf, but I don't know financially how we will do the other part.
Yeah, I think that's the question, is just really, are you, are you interested in any of these concepts? And I think for any of these options that you have, then we can come back with something more specific about what the rebate might be, how it would be processed, what do we think the financial impact is. I don't think a lot of these have been heavily utilized in the past, and so there's really been very minimal impact to the city, but.
Yeah.
We wanted to bring it forward to you, there's been questions about, I know Councilmember Heiser had questions about the rain barrel program, we've talked about that during the budget process, so it's really part of a larger series of options about conservation that we wanted to share with you, and just get some general feedback about how you'd like us to approach it.
Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah. I'd like more, I'd like to get into the nuts and bolts of all of these options to try to understand cost to the city. The question that Councilmember Parsley asked, what we could do, what P&amp;Z could do to require developers to install in-home, the low-flush toilet, showerheads, dual-flush conversion kits, toilet tank, flapper repair kits, all of the in-home items that could be used for better water efficiency, water use. What would, what do you need from us?
Well, I guess if the, if the direction from council is, any type of development agreement we do for housing, that includes housing, is that we have some kind of elements in there that would encourage water conservation, and we could spell those out, and that would be a direction that you could provide to us, that we could look at how to do that in the language that we would have. I think some of the landscaping issues that are out here, we have HOAs, we have some zoning adjust, you know, standards and things like that, that we need to look at that as well to see kind of how that would be done. So there's probably not a global solution on, across the city, but we can come back with some more details for you. But Councilmember Heiser, if that's the direction is on some of those elements with development agreements, and we can certainly include that, it's just direction going forward.
This would need to be multiple motions, then? Is that accurate?
Potentially, or if you wanted to make it all at once, yes.
Well, I don't know how everyone's going to feel about all of it, so. Before I make a motion, does anyone else?
Again, if the council wants to make. Again, we're, if the council wants to make individual motions, you can, but this is really meant to be more discussion of just direction. And then we'll bring you back all these different pieces so you can actually have something to have in front of you that you can adopt of what the specific rebates amounts would be, that, those kinds of things. If you want to just give us direction of how you'd want to, maybe like city manager.
I'd like you to do that. Yeah. I'd like to, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to ask city manager and staff to bring back options for around costs and I guess legalities to implement options one, two, three, four, and five on the slide here. Well, I'm not counting make no changes because that's, that's, it's in conflict with making a motion to begin with.
Are we including the artificial turf in here?
We could.
Well, zero escaping. But, so the motion on the table is to approve all the concepts and in the form of giving the city manager a direction to bring back proposed, concrete proposals is their second. Motion by council member Heiser, seconded by council member Parsley, that we approve this direction. Is there a discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right. Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up is agenda item number 22, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of amending chapter eight, building regulations, article seven, we already did 21. Building regulations and permit, permitting involving pipelines in the city's driveway, roads, roadway and utility infrastructure, section eight, 251, technical provisions for building round pipelines to amend the restricted pipeline area from 200 feet to 100 feet of a natural gas transmission line, et cetera. Ms. Hans.
Mayor and council page, signed city attorney for the record. I don't, sorry, I don't have access to the PowerPoint presentation to move that along. The, but on July 18th, the city council directed staff to bring back an ordinance amendment that reduces the restricted area and adjacent to pipelines, gas pipelines from 200 feet to 100 feet. And this ordinance achieves that direction and council has the option of approving the ordinance as presented, denying the ordinance or giving further directional revisions to be made.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments? Motions? Councilor Floris Kale.
All right. This is number, I'm sorry, 22. Yeah, I would just like to make, I'd like to make a motion. I just want to make sure that we all understand that I don't quite get the reason for the setback. And oddly enough, when I was driving around Kyle, County Road 202, I look up and before me I see a sign that says caution, high pressure gas line. And it's right by a school. And so I literally made myself sick worried about building near a gas line. When I realized, there's gas lines everywhere. Like, I wish, I, and second thought, I had wished that we had just gotten rid of the setback altogether and just kept the 50 feet. And I didn't know if council was willing or amenable to talk about that further. Because I, I feel like my concern was safety. And it's kind of been thrown out the window since I see gas lines, signs and warnings. I saw another one today, everywhere. And I don't want to impede on the landowners any more than they already have, you know, the, the, not just the setback, but the easement. And so I didn't know if council would like to discuss that, maybe cutting it back, the setback even to the 50 feet. I don't know if, I don't know if 100 feet and 200 feet and 50 feet, I don't know if that's going to make a difference. It would be nice to get a clear idea of that as far as safety issues or whatever council's concerns are.
Does anybody have comments on the suggestion?
Is it, could, could I make a motion to, okay. I would like to make a motion to to get rid of the setback altogether and just make the, just have the easement, the 50 feet easement?
For 50, that means it will be the same as the rest of all the gas.
Yes, it would be the same.
Second.
All right. Motion by council member Floris Kale, seconded by council member Parsley, that we eliminate the setback provision on the natural gas pipeline ordinance to allow for the construction near Kinder Morgan to be up to the easement, but obviously not over it. Is there a discussion on that motion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, I'm going to roll call that, sorry. And even then I might not get it right.
Parsley?
Aye.
Zuniga?
No.
Tobias? Heiser?
No.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Nay.
Floris Kale?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes four to three. Next up is agenda item number 23, approve a contract for real estate brokerage services to be provided to the city of Kyle by Chris Torrey, DBA Elite Realty Advisors for the purposes, property acquisitions for public purposes. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor and council, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Before you is an agreement with Chris Torrey, DBA Elite Realty to serve as real estate broker for us. Council has made a priority and staff has been a part of that priority to begin acquiring land in strategic locations. Just here in downtown Kyle, we have a property right adjacent to city hall. We have 104 South Burleson. We've bought 107 Veterans. And I'll continue to look at additional properties for public purpose. Council asks that we bring back Chris Torrey, who's done these transactions for us in the past and been very helpful for your consideration to sign an agreement with him to have him move forward and start working towards other properties we're considering. Contract stipulates a 3% sales price to be a commission for him. He works at risk. He only gets paid if we actually purchase and successfully close on a property. He'll work to gain payment from the seller landlord agents. City of pay amounts to the broker not paid by seller landlord or agents. And staff recommends approval of the contract with any provisions that the council would like to add.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Anybody have any questions, comments? You know, I have a couple of thoughts. Number one is that part of the reason for bringing this forward has to do with some particular projects that we've been discussing in exact. Is that right? Okay. So I think, you know, from, from my standpoint, at least, it would be good for us to maybe limit what we're trying to accomplish here to just those projects that we've been discussing. So that it's not just a blanket indefinite contract. So I was curious if council would be interested in that so that we can limit it.
Say it again?
So we, we codenamed the projects that we've been discussing that we have specific interest in bringing this contract, this PSA forward on. Those were codenamed Rail Yard and Great Outdoors, I believe. But the point of this contract, as far as I see it, is to immediately try to go and start working on producing deals on those two particular concepts. So that's what I'm hoping we could pursue. And if it made council more comfortable, we could make that direction to be stipulated in the contract. So that it's not just for, for just an open kind of discussion, but rather specifically what we're trying to accomplish. Councilor Zuniga.
And I'm okay with that, but also adding the stipulations, should I mention them? Of what was discussed in?
Yes. Yes. We had conversations about the possibility of, of, or stipulating that there can't be, that the broker can't be an intermediary. So he would represent us exclusively. Is that the one you wanted the most?
That one and the 2%?
And then if we, if we do the, both projects together, then, and authorize him that way, then he would agree on a 2% rate.
Yeah. Mr. Torrey is here as well. If you'd like to ask questions of him.
Do you want to speak to that?
I'd like to add something. I, I just would like to add to this and I'm amicable to that. But just to make sure for future purchases that we direct staff to gather a list of real estate brokers, local, local real estate brokers that we can use on a rotating basis. So everybody gets a chance.
I think I could put all, all three of those things into a motion if you'd like. So I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 23 with the stipulations that Mr. Torrey not be allowed to be an intermediary, that the commission rate be reduced to 2%. That the projects that he be authorized to pursue are codenamed Rail Yard and Great Outdoors.
Yes, sir.
Was that it? Did I miss one? Oh, and direct, and to direct staff to put together a procurement policy for brokerage services moving forward for projects that are outside of those two codenamed. All right. Motion by the mayor, seconded by councilor Parsley. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilor Zuniga.
Do we have a contract end date with Mr. Torrey?
Well, but it's specific to these projects.
Okay.
So I don't know that there would necessarily be an end date on it, but it wouldn't, either the projects make or they don't.
It's specific, be specific to the projects based on your motion. There's no end date in the contract, but it could be terminated by the city at any time.
Miguel, it's not going to stop us from doing anything else as part of the RFP process is all.
Right. I just, I didn't want a contract to be open-ended where if we're not moving on it, it's still there, but then if we decide to move another direction, there's still a contract open with Mr. Torrey, so.
I think it's safe, it's specific to what it's supposed to be.
But if it's specific enough, I'm fine with that. I didn't want an open-ended contract.
All right. Councilor Floris Kale.
All right. So I just want to disclose, I was not informed that Mr. Torrey previously did any of the negotiations for the city. And so I do have questions. So how, when we used Mr. Torrey prior to this, how was he recommended to you?
I remember that there were discussions about these particular properties in executive session. And I believe Mr. Torrey's name was mentioned as the person the council would like to use for the purchase of those properties.
I don't, no, we didn't talk about an executive. Again, we, we talked about it before we, 108, before we purchased the three buildings?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if that was an executive, I clearly missed all three of those times that it was, it was mentioned to us. So my apologies for that. So my next question is going to be for Mr. Torrey. All right. Thank you. Hello. So did you negotiate 110 West Center and 108 West Center for the city?
Yes.
You did. Okay. All right. Bless you. All right. That's my only question. And then my other question is, why are we voting on this now? If, if, if it's, if we previously used Mr. Torrey, why are we asking for permission now?
We wanted to formalize a agreement with Mr. Torrey to move forward for future purposes.
Yeah, I, I think we're not aware of an existing contract that we have with Mr. Torrey. And so that's the purpose of that is to make sure it's clear on the record.
Okay. So as brought up prior to by council member Parsley and by council member Zuniga, I feel like there should be some type of process to this and not in the future, but now I feel like we should as a, as a city make sure that we're being transparent and open this whole time. I, I do not support how much we paid for the, at least the second building, which is Jack's, not Jack's Axe, it's Papa Jack's. I feel like it was significantly, it was paid way more than we should have. And so that's really not the kind of negotiation skills I want to see for the city. I would like to have gotten something a little bit closer to what we paid for the, the building that was attached. And so I just, I just wish we could have seen more options before we were presented with just one.
And moving forward, we will be bringing forward comparison prices and appraisals for properties.
Yeah, I guess my question is if we're doing that moving forward, why didn't we do that now?
Appraisals? They have appraisals for properties?
No, what, no, what, different options for, we've all agreed that moving forward, we are going to have more options. So my, my question was, why don't we do that now?
For realtors, is that what you're asking?
For the broker.
Because the council directed me to bring this contract forward.
Councilor Heiser.
I just, I thought it was because we discussed, there was timeliness and this is only, this isn't authorizing the purchase of these properties. We can still have that conversation down the road.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not rushing to get anything. That's what we spoke about. And timeliness is not of the essence to me for this, so.
Well, I, yes, I, I'm well aware.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Just a comment.
Councilor Zuniga.
For Mr. Torrey. Your listings on your webpages, sir, you don't, I did not see a lot of commercial properties. So what is, what experience do you have? I know you, you have a lot of experience, but do you have any under your listings currently or closed and sold?
Yeah, absolutely. The website you see is mostly a residential website. A lot of the other business is done like through CoStar or through LoopNet, which is a commercial site. And yeah, we've closed several commercial deals this year. I would say a handful, maybe six deals total so far this year.
Okay.
Commercial related.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. Next up is agenda item number 24, discussion and possible action to direct city manager to distinguish directional terms in city communications to reference central, northeast, northwest, southeast, and southwest. Councilor Zuniga.
I forgot this one was mine. So, so the reason I brought this one is because we have, for three, three examples, we have a lot of growth, a lot of new developments going on. And we've had a lot of emergencies with some of the wildfires. And also we've had a lot of code issues. And as a resident myself, sometimes when you call Kyle PD, you, you, the first question you get is, what is the, what is the incident? Where are you? And as a resident, you have to think right away, okay, what street is this? What's near me? And sometimes that might not be readily available. So in order to be more accurate and help speed up response times of, you could kind of continue the conversation with dispatch by saying, I'm, I'm in southeast Kyle or I'm in northwest Kyle. That would be terminology that would help navigate this entire city a bit. The other reason is with the last fire, wildfire emergencies, when the announcements come out from the city side, we have the advertising that says wildfire, homes in danger or acres in danger. And all of a sudden, everyone goes into a panic. Is it going to be my house? Is it, is it, is it in my neighborhood? But if we had bit more specificity that says fire northwest Kyle. Okay. If you're northeast, you're, you're safe for now. If you're southwest, you're safe for now. So this is really just to get us to start thinking at that higher level as we're growing. And this is also something very common in, in other cities. And I believe that we already have little sprink, we have some sprinkles of that already in the city. We're already referencing some points of our, of our city. If you look at the Uber map, there's already terminology that says North Lake. There's terminology that says North Plum Creek. So we should start to consider adopting this and trying to be more accurate with our directions, with our navigations. And it also helps to understand developments. Where are they? For example, Keenzenwood, Amberwood. I mean, I didn't know there are two different subdivisions. Yes, they're both northeast, but I guess I can get a proximity and say they're in that area. And I don't have to scramble around and try to find certain, certain developments like Limestone. I don't think many residents know where Limestone is. And there was also some confusion that we should clean up. It gets a little murky as we're It gets a little murky as we're developing these roads. In our past visioning workshop, we were discussing Go Fourth Road. There's an old Go Fourth, and then there's a new Go Fourth. And I was talking with Councilmember Tobias about Go Fourth. I not thought Go Fourth was in his area. And then I find out, no, it's Go Fourth coming into my area. So there will be a connectivity for that road. But if, if city council or staff would say Go Fourth Southeast, okay, it's my road. It's in, it's in my area, my zone, and we can reference downtown as central. Now, this may not get approval, a lot of my motions don't get passed, but I think we should have this discussion for accuracy, to be more intelligent, and to be more aware of how we're growing and take into account, we have a lot of new residents that move into this city as well.
All right. Councilor Parsley.
I'm not, just not, like, I don't want to have that perception, here she comes to not approve my item. Hold on. I just want to make sure that it makes sense, because part of the things that you mentioned is like, you know, some people don't even know where the road that they're in. I don't know that you will necessarily know what quadrant you are from the city. Am I in the northeast or southeast or southwest? That's just, just my opinion. If it's location, I believe that we currently have enough description in the reports, you know, I kind of went a little back and forth with Will, asking questions about this. I don't know from safety perspective if this is something that maybe Chief or our emergency coordinator can wait in. Is that something that you think it will be beneficial? Because, I mean, we're not here to decide this, but maybe we, we could give direction to look into maybe analyzing if this is something we should work on.
Good evening, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. So from a dispatch standpoint, they're trying to ask a number of question, questions to determine someone's location, and then in addition to that, depending on the device that you're using to talk to dispatch, we'll be able to triangulate and find you. Most likely, if you're using a cell phone, we can GPS track you. So we, we have a number of those things now. The rest of it is just a point of discussion that the council might want to identify certain areas, and we'll incorporate those into the questionings that we, we ask in 911. But the rest I'll leave to Will, if he wants to talk about how we want to do messaging, and Rachel, how we want to do messaging for events, because I certainly understand people want to know what part of town is that in if they're not familiar with the street, but from a dispatching standpoint, where we go, and our officers arriving at calls, first responders arriving, I think we've got that covered.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
For the record, Will Piesdebaixo, Emergency Management Coordinator. We currently release the crossroads at the very minimum for any sort of emergency announcements, unless it affects the citywide, and then we say all across the city. Boil water notice is released with a polygon showing more or less where all of the water customers are, as separate from Monarch or their new name, and any other water providers that may be operating in our city limits. With the defuse software, we'll be able to start doing that with wildfires. We'll be able to plot them a lot faster than having a flyover and have them send a map the next day.
All right, thank you. So if there is a potential for something positive to come out of this, I, I would like to see, you know what, the positive aspects of having this district or region's division would be, because if it's just a matter of just the name, I would think it will create even more division than we currently have, you know, like, I don't make mention of east-west. I would like to not see that. I don't know if this is just going to reinforce some sort of division within the city. I, I don't even know how many Austin has, they have, I have only heard South Austin, North Austin, so.
There's a lot.
Mayor Proton.
All right, thank you. I know I mentioned this to city manager before, because when we're looking at the city and the growth, just referencing what Zuniga's saying about the fire or the emergency we had whenever the call went out for the Oak Grove, a lot of people didn't know where it was at, including with Aztec Village. And I remember when that came out, I remember sending an email to Rachel, because I think the, a lot of people didn't know exactly what part of, was it San Marcos or Kyle? But another example I see is we received our Microsoft Roads map that came out and list a bunch of streets. So I can see at the very end, it's, it's mostly going to be near Center Street, but I guess what we're looking at is, is it would be helpful, I guess, when we're talking about development in the future, or specific roads that need to be repaired. Basically, just the region. I know the police use sectors, correct? Like, like Baker, like in Austin, it's Charlie unit, Charlie area, George unit downtown, those kind of scenarios, Alpha, Ben Bravo, all that stuff. So I, it's, it's just as our city is growing, we have a lot of new people that are moving in. I think also it would help maybe to identify projects, like when it comes to our CIP, if we're going to focus on a specific district or a region, we could just use those terms like southwest or southeast, or east central, or central Kyle. It could give people a better direction of like where some of the roadwork is going to be done. Or also, if there's development that's coming up, we can say it is southeast or east central, and we can have a general idea of the part of city this is, this is coming to. Because again, a lot of us who haven't lived here long enough, you know, I can, I know where all the back roads are, by the way. Some of the people who don't know the roads of Go Fourth, and y'all know where Country, Country Road is in Green Pastures, that area? Some people don't. It's, exactly. So it's those kind of roads, crossroads, that, that maybe could help identify certain regions of the city when we're speaking about development or we're speaking about road projects. Because again, that whole conversation, we're going back and forth, Go Fourth Road, and then realize that we were in the whole other side of town. It's just something just to maybe we should start looking at, or get some suggestions on how we can do that going forward.
Yes, sir. Will Aggenson, Director of Planning, for the record. From a, from a cardinal direction, you know, look at the compass, and you got north, south, east, west, southeast, southwest, that's, that's pretty easy. Where we start, it starts getting murky is when you start creating sectors in terms of like central Kyle. We're going through the downtown master plan, we know, or we're, we're honing in on where that area is specifically from a development standpoint, but how far out does central Kyle go from an area perspective? So I don't necessarily recommend something like that from like little pods of that, if you will, or another opportunity is to, of course, use the neighborhoods that are created within the subdivisions as well. But Cardinal Directions is fine. That's, that's pretty easy, that's pretty simple, that's pretty standard, so.
Maybe just by, just going back to the basics of, of using districts, again, District One, District Two, if we already have them split up, we can utilize that map of areas of town.
Are you talking about council districts?
Yeah, like, well, if it's specific District Four or District Two, District Six, I mean, I guess from a development standpoint, because again, not everybody might know where it would be at. And there's times where we're talking about it, it's like, it's over there for 150, and like, where? We got to see the map. And again, certain areas, people don't, don't know where it's at.
Well, I think if the, if the idea is that we generally do a better job of just providing some direction of where things are when we're making media announcements or other kinds of development cases or what have you, we can certainly do all that. We can come up with a map, distribute it to the council, and just say, here's some general areas. I think it's, you can get a lot more complicated than that of actual districts and roads and things like that, but if it's just four quadrants and a central core area of the downtown that you're focused on, we can put something together and send it to you guys and see if that's, I think if I'm hearing right, that's the general idea is, is when you're having an emergency or some cases coming up that we identify, it's, it's in this part of the city.
And to add to that, you know, as we are, are expanding, and there's been times we've annexed areas, we got to understand the divide between what's the city and what's the county.
Right.
Okay, especially some of the roads. If we're going to be working on BB Road, how far up do we need to go before it comes into Precinct Two? And it's just those kind of generalized areas and maps. That's the way I look at it. Thank you. I yield.
Councilor Floris Cale.
All right, thank you. So I too was really confused by the Aztec fire. I had no idea where it was. And originally, when I heard or read, talked to, spoke about the labeling of southwest, southeast, I thought it was a little silly until I thought, hey, I really don't know how the city lays out. And so oddly enough today, when I'm dropping my daughter off at Hayes High School, I see a North Plum Creek, which I thought, that's a great idea, like, that's specific to that location. So when you tell somebody you're in Plum Creek, and you think about how big it is. So they specify their location by saying that they are North Plum Creek. So do I think that would be good for a city? I do. I think to be a little bit more specific on making sure we know where we're at or where we're, where we're developing, especially in economic development, I think it would be helpful to have specific north, southeast, and for me, it's really not about division, it's about location and making sure that we all understand, because our city's growing so big. I don't know what we could do to kind of define that, though. I think that would be up to Will to, to say, hey, look, hey, look, this is, this is how we implement this, and this is how we figure it out. Because when I saw that picture, I, I snapped it, sent it to Zuniga, I was like, look, this makes sense, now I get it. It like was a light bulb that came on for me. It's not just about small things, it's about the big thing, about knowing where we're at and being able to explain, not just to the fire department, to our friends, like where we live and where we're going to meet up at. I think that's really specific.
One last thing. So whenever we are beginning to meet with developers and what have you, one of the things we do ask is, you know, what are you going to be calling your development? The primary reason is, we don't want any similar names to other existing projects for fire safety, for emergency response and all that. We have a lot of Oaks of, or a lot of Button Creeks and related stuff like that. So just something to add on to that, as an idea.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see some kind of action on it, but it's up to the council.
Is there any way that we can direct staff to look into the options or benefits of creating this district, or just to see if there is a good potential or good benefit to it?
I believe I gave very logical explanations up here. I think that the reason we're not moving forward with this is because I'm the person that brought it up.
No, come on now, stop it. Okay.
Yeah, just make a motion, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to, to, direct Brian, sorry, Mr. Langley, to, to give us some options is on the layout of the city based on ge- geographic locations. Using Councilwoman, Councilmember Floris Cale's example of how, when you say that you're in Plum Creek, people kind of know where that is across the city.
And also, can we-
I think there's many other examples of how we could use existing neighborhoods to identify location.
May I, may I just make a quick comment to that?
Second.
Added a, all right.
So just for clarification, Plum Creek North came after the Plum Creek basically master plan was done, and just to make sure that they knew that they are not a part of the actual Plum Creek, and they don't have the same HOA or the same, I mean, it was just like, and added. So just like, hey, we're not the same to talk about the kind of division that I mentioned.
I didn't even know.
I just, I just wanted to let you know. They have their own pool, they have their own things.
But can we also touch, when he, you bring back that information, can we touch on the fact that I don't want to see, and I don't know how council feels, roads going from east to west with the same name? I think that's kind of confusing. I, I don't, you know, I don't know. Does that make sense?
I think we can certainly bring you some areas that we could call northwest, you know, southeast, northeast, those kinds of things, but Plum Creek North is in the northwest part, portion of the city. I don't know if that's more confusing or less confusing personally.
It's northwest.
So I, I think we could certainly give you some geographic boundaries of some districts and say, these are these areas. Does this sound about right, what you're considering? When we say central Kyle, I don't think the downtown, even though a lot of us think of it as central Kyle, it's really not.
And that's why we need to know.
And so you could, you know, so we could call this the downtown area or something like that. And I think Will and I can put something together that's really just a useful tool for when we communicate different events around the city, and that's probably about the limitations of what that would be for, and if there's an emergency or something like that, that we try to identify it. But I think there are going to be neighborhoods that are named certain things that don't always fit with these categories. So North Plum Creek is going to be a northwest, you know, area, or it could be central Kyle, depending on how you define it.
Yes, I mean, I don't think this has to be complicated. I mean, we always talk about east-west, but we're not refining that. So let's just be more refined in our, in our language and give each other better, I guess, more accurate specificity of where these developments are, what side of the city are we on, so.
Yep. We could certainly try to put, yes, sir, we could certainly try to put a map together like that, that hopefully captures the essence of the conversation.
All right, any further discussion? Halls in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I don't want, I don't want it anymore. Take that action item back.
All right, last item, agenda item 25, debrief to residents and council regarding Oak Hill Fire, including and not limiting to discussions regarding EOC procedures, communication with council from emergency management coordinator, and future protocols regarding emergencies and evacuations. Councilmember Floris Cale, Councilmember Zuniga.
All right, thank you. I brought this because I wanted to give the floor to you. I want to hear about your experience, and, and maybe we can talk about things that we can do to make it a little bit cleaner, clearer next time. I feel like we kind of went over this in COVID, but we didn't have an emergency coordinator during that time, not COVID, Snoven. We didn't have an emergency coordinator, so I would, I would love to hear your feedback and.
Again, Will Piesdebaixo, Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Kyle. I've developed this brief overview of the after action that y'all will be receiving. You'll receive a written document with a formal after action report and improvement plan in the coming days. Basic facts, 15 and a half acres burned, approximately 50 to 60 homes were evacuated as a precaution by the incident commander on scene, who was Chief, Chief Taylor of the Kyle Fire Department. Chief Kyle would just be two on the nose of the Kyle Fire Department. This is the timeline of events. 1:47, the call came in through active 911 to our dispatch center. They were alerted of fire, of a fire in this area. 1:56, I was notified by Chief Barnett as he was en route to the scene. Commander Jones was the PD liaison at the scene until Chief Barnett's arrival with the fire department. Public Works was also out there with their water trucks, trying to keep a tamper on things until additional resources come out. Big shout out to them, because that is not within their wheelhouse or their job description, and they absolutely rocked it. We had air assets, we had assets from all over the region within half an hour. You couldn't get a pizza faster than Chief Taylor got everything in here, to include bucket drops from the air. Union Pacific was notified that EOC was open for the first time. We had staff at the EOC. Parks and Recreation was leading the mass care effort. We opened up three centers at, okay, we're safe, I think. We, we opened up three cooling centers for people displaced to wait out the fire until they could find out if they're returning to their homes or not. HEB was contacted by the county, Mike Jones, to solicit donations for those air, for those centers. Parks and Recreation, without any like prompting, put together a bunch of board games to make sure nobody got bored at our centers, and went out and actively serviced all three locations. At 516, I was notified of 90% containment and that the roads would be reopening soon, that people could return to their homes, and was given the good news that there were no losses of life or property. Like, this will all be in the after action as well, if you want to review the timeline. The operation itself at the scene was headed up by Kyle Fire. Everything else was in support. The EOC was staffed by city managers. Brian was there, Jerry was there. Communications, Rachel was there. Parks and Recreation was represented by Claudia. Everything regarding mass care was run from there. Any support that the incident command had needed is provisioned from that location. It became the information clearinghouse. If anyone wanted to know anything about what's going on, we had that info at the EOC. What we're trying to do for the future, because that was, given the small size of the incident, given what I've seen in the past, Harvey, COVID, the first winter storm, now this winter storm, this was like a textbook- Now this winter storm, this was like a textbook activation of an EOC. It worked out. The people who needed to be there to make decisions they needed to make were there quickly. Incident command basically ran itself. Uh, they were very self-contained because they were addressing the one thing the firefighters know how to do best, which is a big fire. Luckily not too big. It didn't break out of its boundaries, uh, spread anywhere else. There were no homes lost. So it was more or less as ideal as a fire can be without it not being a fire. Uh, the only things that I would be asking for protocol to activate the EOC, I made that call while driving up here. It was unilateral. We should have some sort of, uh, policy in place and there are drafts sitting in front of Jerry, Brian and Amber. Uh, I would like to distinguish a limited and full activation, what sort of staff we should expect, uh, who will be assigned to respond as well as. Uh, best practice is a three deep list of alternates. If the first is not able to respond due to disaster, their alternate will show up. Parks and Recreation requested additional materials to take to our shelters or centers as they may open, any sort of, um, mass care operations. We should also adopt a former shelter policy. One, I'm using this language centers. What are centers? A true shelter is defined in the mass care annex, the federal level by the Red Cross and by the state. As facilities that house people for a prolonged period of time, usually overnight, water, food, all these things are provided. A center, short term, you're just out of the sun, you're out of the heat, you might have some water. Parks brought board games, but we're not doing the full mass care package. So what is formally in policy, a center versus a shelter? What does the city distinguish these things? That is also drafted, that's before the city management right now. Uh, I would also like to, with you guys, conduct a tabletop EOC exercise. Because I don't know that there is a, a, a complete grasp of what the EOC's relationship is with the incident command post. What your all's roles are in the EOC. And honestly, I just think it would be fun. Well, that is the end of that presentation. I can address any questions you guys might have.
No, so here is, and I don't know if there is a protocol and this is something that you would like to address. So on the day of the fire, I'm pretty sure that you got a lot of messages and emails. And, uh, everybody on council was emailing or texting somebody. And, um, I can only imagine how overwhelming it is when you don't get answers right away. Like I started getting, like, you know, I need to know, is it coming to Kyle? Is it not coming to Kyle? How far it is? Is it contained? Is it not contained? Nobody's responding. So I'm texting Chief Taylor and I'm pretty sure he was getting text messages from everybody.
Yes.
And then, uh, if I don't hear from him, then he sent me a message for Mike Jones. Um, which I'm pretty sure he got messages from a thousand people.
And he was also at the-
So, um, I don't know if there is a way for us to establish on emergencies like this to have a line of, you know.
Yes.
Communication between us, city managers or directors, anybody that is going to be affected. So we don't have to be bugging people. What's going on, you know?
There, there is a plan. Well, we don't have a written plan for this. I am trying to create a written plan for this. But to cut out the calls to me, I brought in everybody who was texting me constantly into the EOC. That was that solution. And that's what I want to do with you guys. We do have room in that building to house all the elected officials to host standard briefings. This is what's happening. This is how bad bad is. This is how bad bad can get. This is what we're doing about it. I, you know, a few people did come. They observed what was going on. I did see mayor there. I did see Mayor Protem there. I did see, uh, Councilmember Heiser there. They looked in, they saw, ah, the operation is progressing. This is what containment is. Updates were coming in and it wasn't flooding people's phones. Because the last thing, I know Chief Taylor left, the last thing I want to do is pester him for half hour updates. He's busy fighting the fire.
Yes.
Um, luckily this one was small, but like the Oak Row Fire, four hundred some odd acres. I don't want to bother him every half hour. I shouldn't bother him every half hour. So when they release that info, if we have these consistent briefings within the EOC for elected officials, for, uh, major stakeholders, for city management. Then you don't need to text. You don't need to speculate.
Yes, exactly.
And that's part of the reason I want to have the exercise with you guys.
I, I think that would be-
Over all of this. And it's not just in writing, but it's imprinted in the doing part of your brain.
It, it, it would be super beneficial.
Yes, if you don't mind adding. Just got home from work. Got ready to change my shorts and t-shirt and got calls from everybody. There's a fire on Roland Lane. Obviously that's where my parents live. So of course the panic set in and everybody was calling me. And I found out, I did not check my email. It's at Aztec Village and it's like, I already know that area with all mobile homes. So get in car and I drove by. Of course I don't stop because I don't want, you know, one more person there is another liability. So I just keep driving. But I went to the library to check on the shelter. Didn't see anybody there. And so that's kind of why I made a call to one of the city managers. I just wanted to know, just checking in, see if anybody needs anything. Then I went to the First Baptist Church and they were already setting up there in the fellowship hall. But I didn't know who from the city was actually needing to report at the First Baptist and also at the library.
Claudia did arrange for staff from Parks and Recs to be at both. Uh, they should have been there at the time that each were opened. Library sent me a head count of six that arrived at their facility for the duration of the fire. First Baptist had like one guy walk in and then just walk back out.
Yeah. And, and maybe I got there before they got there, but I mean, I, I did hear that eventually, you know, it was, it was planned out all the way. And so I think, I think it would be beneficial that we do in these situations, uh, we use the, we get a command center going, an instant command center. Um, and then we have the people there and if we need to do a live broadcast, like a Facebook post or something like that to give an update. So that way people can know. Cause again, a lot of people were like saying, what's the status? What, but a lot of people were very pleased with the communications department. Rachel, I'm letting you know that a lot of residents from my side of town was like saying, you guys were on it. You know, cause every like hour or half hour, there was, there was something. And, uh, of course with Wimberly fires, that really made everybody nervous. I think after, after a while, once you get a policy going, I think it will really help. And, and I would do, I would suggest a mock exercise with council to give them a little familiarity.
Absolutely.
Lou, yeah, so thank you for, for all the, the, the service and the support during the fires and for the announcements made and all the public safety centers. The only thing is, so how many people evacuated out of the fires to the church or to the library?
Estimated of seven people, sir.
Seven people in total? And then during that Oak Grove one, I guess.
That I don't have figures on because it wasn't in our city. Um, that was San Marcos's. I kept up just with what I was asked to do, but I don't know anything about who was evacuated and where they went. Cause it wasn't us.
So I did send an email and I was requesting that the public safety center or the city hall be used as a cooling center.
Yes, sir.
Since we've had a lot of very triple digit, um, heat days. Why has that not been part of the equation yet? I know that we got probably very lucky, but if in the event that we did not get lucky and more homes were lost and more people were suffering. Uh, I did want to have that extra support where the residents could go, uh, and get professional service around them.
For a cooling center, the professional service they would get is, is just water basically, and somebody that may be able to answer questions. The PD could be used if it was absolutely necessary. Uh, the lobby area is open. And this is actually one of the things I want to touch on in the shelter policy, defining what a center is. All a center is, is just a building that is owned by the city or a building that we designate and is manned by city staff that's open during the day. Uh, this room, you know, this is never locked during business hours. Anyone can come in off the street to cool off. Same thing with PD buildings, same thing with the library, same thing with the public works building. Whether or not we publicly announce-
Right, we do not publicly announce that. So how would residents know, hey, if my air conditioning is out at home. Um, there's a place for me to go cool off and it's not the library. Cause not every, not everybody's near the library, right? Some people might be in another part of the city where another facility might be closer to them.
Well, and are we talking, uh, hypothetical context of just somebody without power at the moment? Or are we still talking about the fire?
Well, I guess it's a, um, in, as a cooling center, if, do we still have cooling centers going on to, um, here in, here in the city? Is the library still a cooling center as definition?
It would not be an emergency operation if somebody just lost power and wanted to go cool off somewhere. But they can still walk into any building because we're all open with the exception of the Parks building, I think. And even that, even that one, I'm not sure. I've just always seen the door locked. But no, for a, just a regular, one house is out of power, we wouldn't declare that an emergency. We wouldn't activate the EOC. There wouldn't be staff to give out water because that doesn't rise to the levels the city needs to respond.
Okay. Thank you, Will.
I'm, I'm not clear that I answered the question that was asked though. Did I answer the question that was asked?
I guess you said, you said it has to be to a certain level where we, where we need it, we need to announce it.
Yes. Um, so the fire displacing sixty homes, you know, that rose to the level that the city, in my opinion, should have responded. Uh, I activated the EOC. We had staff at designated centers. So I guess my question is, are you asking why the, the public safety building is not just generally used like this? Or if it's, why was it not designated and staffed with park staff on this one event?
Well, yeah, during, during the fire evacuations.
So during the fire evacuation, why was the public safety building not staffed with park staff?
Or city hall opened up.
Uh, we could have used either. The library was immediately available. The Krug Center was, I was told, be able to be made available quickly and was completely empty. So we could just fill that up to the rafters and not disrupt anyone's work. Those were the reason I picked those two. The county contacted me and said that First Baptist was offering to open their doors. That was of their own volition. I didn't ask them and said, okay, we'll add them to the list. We'll provide staff, we'll provide water, or rather HEB provided water, but we'll deliver it and make sure that everyone's serviced.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
I think that- Councilman Forrest Kell.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember. Uh, but I, I think what I would say is, um, we've kind of talked through this as a staff. And my experience is great to have a, a, a good plan on what the center versus the shelter that we define those locations. And when we have this joint, uh, training exercise that we talked about having, uh, in the EOC and walk through that. This draft shelter management plan, I think is what you've called it. Uh, we could identify those places that the council wants to have as a cooling center. Also, I know it's hard to believe, but a warming center, it will get cold hopefully at some point, but, or, or cooler. But at some point there'll be, you'll, we'll be asking those questions of when do we need to open warming centers? And where do we want those to be in the community? And so I'd really like to have that in a policy that's clear. For, uh, the council to know what you've directed us to do and that we have a plan for what we're going to proceed with. So we all have a, a good idea of what this will be. So I think we could delineate that at that time when we have that training, go through that discussion. And talk about what types of events we would want to have and when we would want to announce it.
Right. And, and part of that is when I saw the images, the imagination I had was sixty, seventy homes on fire in the, in the Aztec Village. And residents losing everything, leaving with only their clothes on their back. So I'm thinking, um, the worst case scenario. So all hands on deck right now.
So for that, your home, you can't go back to it. We go to full true shelter operations. We have cots set up in a gymnasium for people to sleep in because they can't go home. That's, that's a completely different operation than just a cooling center.
Right.
Uh, it's much grander, uh, grander in scale. We would probably have cert in here, parks would be. And to Mariana's credit, as soon as I called even for the cooling centers, with the possibility that we go to overnight operations. She sent staff home to sleep to get ready to wake up in the middle of the night to service a shelter. Luckily we didn't need those shelters, but we were prepared to jump in and do everything we could.
I would just, I just wanted to say, um, you answered most of my questions in your presentation alone. I appreciate you, uh, being proactive and of several things that I was going to discuss and, and point on. So thank you guys for that. And I think moving forward, this was a great, uh, learning opportunity since there were no losses of life or, or housing. So I think as long as we take it as that and we move forward, I think, um, we're going to be okay.
Did we ever find the cause of the fires? Was it Amber's or?
The origin was determined to be on the side of the road. Due to the airdrops, no evidence remained at the site, according to the fire marshal. So it could have been just somebody idling outside of the road and their, uh, what do you call it underneath the car? Yes, the, the converter was hot enough to touch off the grass, could have been cigarette tossed out the window, could have been anything. They just know it was on the side of the road. But yeah, with this conditions, it doesn't take much. One cigarette out into some dry grass with that kind of wind, fifteen miles an hour that day, you, you were done.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Take it.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.